Okay, Council. It is the City Council regular meeting, 6:30 PM on Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. It is a virtual meeting. And roll call, Lita?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Odell.
He's present, his microphone is off.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Train.
Present.
Excellent. Meeting Accessibility. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. The city is now using Zoom webinar to host its public meetings. To join Zoom webinar on the web, by telephone dial 253-215-8782, and enter the following webinar ID when prompted, To view live, the city website is www.samamish.us/tv21. You can view on the city YouTube site or Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. To view later, the meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. Again, the city website is www.samamish.us/tv21 on YouTube and Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. Pledge of Allegiance. Who would like to lead us? How about Councilmember Odell?
Sure. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And my apologies for being a little bit late. I had to get out and come back in again to take the course.
Thank you. Thank you for doing the pledge. And I know we had another council member who was late because he was helping with the salmon, Councilmember Gamblin. And I believe, how many did they end up releasing, Councilmember Gamblin? It was 600 and... I believe it was 645? Something like that.
I don't know, watch and know.
Yeah, it's on there. Anyway, those fish were amazing. So it was an awesome thing to go and watch down at Walley's to see them taking them out of where they've been since May and having them go into the stream. It was pretty cool. Okay, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion?
I'm moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, so discussion, we have a couple of things. We have got... Okay, on the agenda, we've got number 14, which is going to be removed because it's actually moved into a different presentation. So 14 is actually removed because it's actually moved into the presentation with the budget. And then we're going to swap around numbers 19 and 18. So the discussion on the regional boards and committees, we will do before we will do the City Manager's proposed biennium adjustments.
Madam Mayor, I think we need to make that into a motion to change it.
Okay, so I'm... Okay, well, one, the presentation in there is going to be straight because that's...
Just swap things and interchange the agenda. It needs to be an amendment to the motion on the floor.
Okay. So I propose that we... And yeah, this would be a proposal. So I'm proposing that we swap those two around. The reason I want to swap those around would be because I want to make sure that we get that done tonight and we don't leave that at the end where we possibly don't have it finished.
I'll second the motion.
Amendment.
Amendment, rather.
Okay. Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor. I see a hand up from Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I'm just having some technical difficulties. And I just wanted to confirm if folks could hear me because I'm struggling to hear. I'm only getting some of the audio.
Okay, yes, we can hear you.
Okay. And I'm having trouble even pulling it. It must be my internet because I'm having trouble getting the latest agenda up. So can I just confirm that we did get the... That we have the executive session right after public comment?
Yes, we didn't. There was nothing on there to change anything with that.
All right, I just want to confirm. Thank you because I know there was a discussion that that may change. So thank you so much.
Okay, is there any other... Anything else about for change? We've got an amendment. Any other amendments? Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor with a second. All those in favor of the amendment on the floor, which is to swap 18 and 19, say aye.
Isn't it to combine 14 with 18 as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so now we go back to the original motion on the floor, which was the approval of the agenda.
As amended.
All of those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Okay, public comment. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@latchey@samamish.us and thecitycouncil@samamish.us. Verbal comment. To join the Zoom meeting, if you would like to give a verbal public comment, information on how to join is listed under Meeting Accessibility at the top of the agenda. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lita.
If you would like to give a public comment, would you please raise your hand or press star nine if you're calling by phone? Currently, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 people who have raised their hands. I will unmute callers in the order they have raised their hands. When it is your turn, I will convert you to a panelist so you will be unmuted and can turn on your webcam or camera if desired. You will then have three minutes to provide comment. If you wish to speak at the public hearing, please say so and you'll be returned as an attendee until the public hearing and asked to raise your hand to speak again at that time. During the conversion to a panelist, it will feel like you have been removed from the meeting. Please wait a few seconds and you will return. 15 seconds before your three minutes is complete, I will provide a time warning. At three minutes, you will be muted and converted back to an attendee. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live in for the record. We will now unmute the first caller. Okay, our first commenter is Mike, Mr....
Thank you so much. I don't know how to draw my camera, so here we go. I actually ruled something out so to try to stay within three minutes. So first off, thank you to Mayor Moran and all the council members for allowing me the time to speak. I provided this short statement just to keep within the time limits. My name is Mike Gokel. I am joining this call as a representative of the homeowners on East Lake Samamish Shore Lane Road, entering at 33rd, house numbers 32, 37, 36, 11. While my family is the newest member to the street, our neighbors have lived in this street for many years, one since late 60s, others arriving in the 70s, 80s, 90s, and 2000s. They have shared the history of navigating our street through the bumps and potholes, the past efforts to obtain repair and maintenance to avail. I have emailed many of you and I just appreciate everybody's responses. I know many of you have taken the time to come out and see the street and talk to us, and we just are really thankful for that and wanted to say thank you for taking that time. As you know and have read from our emails, if you haven't been able to be here, according to Public Works Director Jeff Elikish, one of our street was deemed the worst in Lake Samamish with a PCI score of 6.9. My wonderful neighbors Foster and Lemoine, who I know you've also heard from, have been appealing to the city of Samamish since 1999 to fix our road. But every year, the road has been not have been... Has not been acknowledged or budgeted for. Each of the council members who have met with us had stated that never before Jeff Elikish had a city personnel told them about the problems and needs of our road. We're very thankful for the communication that's happened between Public Works and all of you to let us be part of the budget meeting and the agenda. And in fact, we appreciate... We know we are a line item in that proposed budget and just really wanted to, again, thank you for considering this. Unfortunately, the appropriate departments and past council members did not take the time to understand the problems. So as you probably know and saw, the road has deteriorated and has become a safety concern for the neighbors, for walkers, and for city, state, and federal trucks that drive our lane. The problem is it has continued to defer the maintenance on the road and no longer a candidate for overlay, which I think you all know. And it needs full repair, which is now in the proposed budget. Another reason that we really seek to get this road repaired is we're worried about the utilities and the public sewer and public water that's in the road. Ignoring the road longer could lead to emergency repairs and ultimately cut us all off from water.
15 seconds.
On behalf of everybody on the road, we just thank you for your time and consideration and request that you approve this road in this revised budget. And we look forward to working with the city of Samamish and all of you for the repairs. So that's it. Thanks very much.
Thank you for calling in.
Okay, I will now promote the second caller. Ms. Bird.
And you're on mute.
Darn, there we go. All right, Jane Bird from Samamish. And good evening, council members and staff. I'm making this comment on behalf of the Samamish stewards, who are your volunteers doing restoration work in city parks and stormwater ponds. And I've just looked... We were looking at the number five on the consent agenda. It's a nice scope with the Davy Resource Group, but it takes all the money away from hiring. It could go towards hiring at Arboris. So we agree with, there was at least one council member, maybe several, that suggested it should be a priority sooner rather than later. We're wondering, could you narrow the scope for the Davy group? Maybe hire the person mid-year? Maybe find some money from another little pot somewhere else and make that happen? And one thing we are absolutely thrilled about, when we looked at the budget, it said there's a restoration specialist was recommended as a full-time permanent position. We fully support it. With expanded parks and restoration areas, this position's expertise is essential. Also, this position will likely be a key position as we go forward with the Urban Forest Management Plan. It'll be an important part of that interdepartmental team who'll be carrying it out. And our next concern, which we shared with some staff and council members, is a need for a natural areas crew to work in the natural areas of our parks that aren't the steward restoration areas. Our contractual landscapers, as we showed a few of you one at a time, came out to check out Ebride Park. And in some places, they're not removing invasive plants that are really taking over. Other places, they're pruning inappropriately. Sword ferns in the gumdrops and saw that Western red cedar they kind of slaughtered. So perhaps you could start out with one person, staff person, and then hire an Americor, maybe an Earthcore person to work with them. Maybe another option would be to assign a parks maintenance staff to focus on removal of invasives and natural areas of the parks with the assistance of some of the experienced volunteers several times a year and, you know, rotate to the different parks. Eventually, Samamish might want to become a green city with Portera as part of the Urban Forest Management Plan, and they could also work with city staff and volunteers in maintaining natural areas. We also saw as a budget item for Samamish Commons Trail Connection. We fully support that. We've heard there might be another option going behind Mary Queen of Peace. We hope you can pursue a connection there. Also, we support the budget for the park's wayfinding system. Hope this will include the next phase that we've discussed with some of the staff. The new wayfinding signs we have for the parks is great. And then the next phase is where does a park user find the amenities within the park? Like I said, people still don't know where the Lower Commons Native Plant Garden is. We got grant money for...
15 seconds.
And an interpretive sign via the National Wildlife Federation. Now, if we could just have a sign pointing out where the garden is, that'd be nice. So we thank you for your consideration on these topics as you revise the budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you for calling.
Thank you, June.
I will now unmute the third caller. Mr. Stickney.
Good evening, City Council. Paul Stickney here tonight. Yeah, I'm calling about pivot points to reach net positive growth in Samamish. A couple of those from my October 5th comment were about Samamish has been misdeveloped over 20 years, not necessarily overdeveloped. It's a mix. Another thing is there are known and unknown numbers needed to evaluate net positive growth. From the October 12th meeting, it's important that jurisdictions in King County plan for their share of... I was about the R. Regional growth, but also local internal needs. And in Samamish, there's an issue. We have one super category of housing at 100% AMI and above. That category encompasses about 87% of the households in Samamish, and it masks significant shortages, but even more significant surpluses. It's time to break that category into roughly 30% AMI bands and really understand the needs for all economic categories. Of tonight's pivot points I'd like to talk about is, growth has been passionate and words are used by many camps or all camps that the others are biased and prejudiced, and my approach is right. Well, there are three different groups. They all say that. We need to reach reasoned aims and ideology in order to find cohesive cooperation between the groups. The second point I'd like to make is outside development interests. I don't believe that. I never have. Maybe with King County, not in Samamish. It's our issues are we ourselves and us. There are three groups on growth. They've never been together. We need to stop battling each other. It's time to inform, collaborate, and find compromised unity. My last pivot point for tonight is conjecture and facts as opposed to facts and conjecture. When it comes to growth and economic services in Samamish, there's been ample amounts of conjecture, anecdotal information, but slim pickings on facts. It's time to elevate facts to equal to conjecture. It's great to have opinions and passion, but we need the facts. Then we can bring the groups together to find net positive growth. I'd like to close with a quote that I think...
15 seconds.
A paradigm shift. Well, you can read the quote because I won't have time to read it, but it's a great quote from John Kennedy about "we choose to determine aims not because it will be easy, but because..."
Thank you for calling in.
I will now unmute the fourth caller. Ms. Wang.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So my name is Jessica Lang, and I am one of the owners of Auto Doctor. We are the mechanic service that has been taking care of your vehicles since 2018. Our contract ended in August, and I just wanted to reach out because... Well, at first, we enjoyed working with you very much. We had a great time with Martin and Marlene, and it was a great experience. These last six months, though, have not been to the point of I needed to come forward and express to you guys the changes that we've seen in the last three years that have made us unable to continue to do work. In the last 50 days, we'd sent bills out to you guys in August. The bills were ignored by John Arnold for about 40 days. We were told a check would be in the mail. So now we're in the middle of September. At this point, Finance says, "Your check's coming, no big deal." A week goes by, nothing. I call Finance after I email John Arnold twice to be told you're not getting paid. Come to find out, it took until October 11th for me calling the city manager's office to be ignored by phone calls and emails and $15,000 for a small business. And like I said, we had a great relationship with you guys. We've never, ever charged an overdue invoice because everything was always... The communication was there. If Martin, Marlene, Jamie ever had a question, they came to us. It was resolved immediately. And I had to. I had to charge fees. Long story short, John Arnold told us that he ignored us for all of this time because there's an insurance claim going on right now. One of the vehicles, vehicle 37, had a damaged part. The vehicle, this happened on May 21st. This vehicle just this week was towed to the dealer for an estimate. Obviously, since then, we've had many months of major rental fees that it sounds like have not been being turned into insurance until a few weeks ago. And so John said that legal told him to hold our money and not talk to us until the insurance claim was solved. Well, our contract was up in August, so we really hadn't been in touch. Never knew there was a problem with insurance until last week. So since then, jumped on the ball. The car has been towed to the local Ford. But, you know, we also own a janitorial company. We were given the bid for the new janitorial contract, and we obviously couldn't do that because of this. And we just wanted you to know there's a major communication problem in the city. Thank you.
Thank you for calling.
Mayor, we'll follow up with it. I don't know anything about it, but we'll follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
I will now promote the fifth caller.
Karen, sorry, I had my hand up.
Okay.
I think the city manager kind of just stated that he'll follow up, but I just want to make sure. I mean, obviously, this isn't something that normally council would be involved with, but given that we just had public comment. Dave, will you be sure to loop the council in on that?
Yes, I will.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now promoting the fifth caller.
Hi, this is Mary Victor, and I've lived in Samamish 21 years. I did send in a couple emails today on the Bluma, and I'll also be speaking for that public hearing on the Stormwater Code Administrative Procedure Amendments, which I agree with. But what I wanted to speak to during generalized public comment right now is on the Development Regulations Phase 2. First of all, I just want to say I really appreciate all the work that staff and people and input groups and the consultants have been doing. Every time I've seen the development regulations, they've changed. They've been improved, they're better. So I hope that even though it's in front of city council now and it won't be going to public hearings, I guess, until November, December, that changes could still be made. In Exhibit 1, the biggest thing is is we've added this new section on new design standards, but it's only for subdivisions and short plots and binding site plans. It does not go down to the level of a single-family resident. And also, the concept of a Florida area ratio, which is what the city will be using to try to make sure that we're not putting big houses on small lots. Those really do need to apply to single-family homes that are either on existing lots or vacant in a place that wasn't developed or whatever. So I really would like to see those changes integrated. And I know like a single-family lot isn't going to do things like streets. It's not making them. It's not making wider area planning, and it's not doing open space. But it is doing things like looking at the trees, looking at the vegetation, looking at the topography, looking at the uses of the land. And some of the single-family lots that could either be built or done through a reasonable use exception are very large, and some of them are very small. And the city doesn't have a minimum lot size. So I think it's super important to do that. Also, is happy to see a lot of changes in the Clearing and Grading section in Title 16. I see new limits of like 1,000 square feet for regular lots and 200 square feet for critical areas lots are being considered. Because there is no minimum lot size, I think you also need to be able to say that it's that or a percentage of the lot size, whichever is smaller. We've done that in the Drainage Code before, and it worked really well and was very clear. Also, on reasonable use exceptions, you also have, again, very different sized lots that may or may not be fully constrained using one or more critical areas. So I think we need to look at that. And I would like there to be a way for illegal situations to be fixed. The people have done things with trees or drainage or clearing and grading that has been done illegally. A lot of times, there's no recovery from it, and there needs to be a way to do that.
15 seconds.
And then for looking at what's in Phase 3, anything from the dockets or input that is not covered should be put in Phase 3. I didn't get to that part today to review it, but I hope that you'll consider that input. So thank you for listening, and I hope you...
Thank you for calling in.
We had another commenter raise their hand, so I will be promoting this caller. Mary.
Hi, thank you for letting me comment. My name is Mary Duradas. I'm a resident at Providence Point and a lifelong resident of Washington State. My comment is about changes. Item number 13, changes to the Surface Water Design Manual and that neighboring and downstream properties be notified and given the opportunity to provide public comment. Some 900 feet of Laughing Jacobs Creek runs through our community. So we appreciate your consideration of these changes. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for calling.
That's all for public commenters.
Okay, thank you for all the callers that called in this evening. Okay, next up, we have got executive session. And this is executive session for public employee RCW42.30.1101F. And I believe, what are we looking at? Probably 30 minutes? Yeah, let's start with 30 minutes. Okay, so it is...
And Mayor, that's to review a complaint, correct? That is to investigate...
That is to investigate a...
Yes. So it is seven, let's see, by the time we get back there, so let's say 7:10. So let's say we'll be back here at 7:40. This is the city council regular meeting for Tuesday, October 19th, and we are in executive session and that executive session will be extended until 8:20. Again, the executive session will be extended until 8:20. Thank you. Okay, it's 8:20. Do we have everybody back on?
Kent, I think the background noise is City Hall because I'm still hearing it.
Yeah, me too. I think you're absolutely right.
There's a dog in City Hall?
I am so not going to comment on that.
Take the fifth.
Wise move.
Okay, so I'm going to make sure that we have everybody on. Let's see, Councilmember Stewart, I heard you. I heard Councilmember Trin. I heard Councilmember Odell. Councilmember Ross, are you with us?
I am.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm here.
Okay. All right, so Councilmember Gamblin? Okay, I don't see him. Let's give him just one more minute.
There he goes.
10 minutes, I set my timer.
Excellent. Okay, next up, we have the consent calendar. And I'm looking for a motion for the consent calendar.
I moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Kristi, I never saw a response to your question. I'd like that item pulled until we get a response.
There was a response to it.
There was? Did it go to the whole council?
I don't know. I believe it did. It was, actually, it was very simple. It was about Southeast Fourth and Isquah Falls City Road, I believe. Mr. City Manager, you want to, it's the attorney, the billing on there for 20 some thousand dollars that it has to go?
The name escapes me, but they were specialized construction attorneys brought on to help the city collect from the utility companies on Isquah Falls City Road, Southeast Fourth, and a few other projects now we've been able to use them on to assist us.
Okay, for future reference, it would be great if responses like that went to everyone. I don't seem to have that response in my inbox, so...
Didn't realize it, I didn't see the other trail of anything. It was just a question. Public Works Director had, Scott had asked Lisa and I saw it, so I just provided an answer. Didn't realize it was something general to the whole council.
All right, thanks.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent. Okay, we do have a proclamation this evening and it is the Extra Mile American Foundation. And so Councilmember Trin, would you like to read that?
Yes, I would. I don't mind at all. Sammish, Washington proclamation, Extra Mile Day, November 1st, 2021. Whereas Sammish, Washington is a community which acknowledged that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism in service. And whereas Sammish, Washington is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Sammish, Washington is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Sammish, Washington acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 500 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2021. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Sammish do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2021 to be Extra Mile Day. And I urge each individual in the community to take the time on this day to do, to not only go the extra mile in his or her own personal life, but to also acknowledge all those who are aspirations in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, their families, the community, and the country, including the world, a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and we have a lot of people that go the extra mile in the city. Okay, next up, we have got our public hearing. And who is, I believe we were going to have, is this going to fall under Mr. Pyle? Yes, it is. There he is.
Good evening, Mayor. David Pyle, Community Development. Next on your agenda for Item Number 13 tonight, we have some proposed amendments to the city's process for stormwater review. Lindsay Osbold from Community Development will be providing a presentation and then turning it back over to you for a question and answer that's necessary and then holding of a public hearing. Lindsay?
Thank you, David. Let me share my screen. All right, good evening, Council. Mayor Moran, this evening we'll be discussing the stormwater code updates. I will be giving the presentation and as David said, he'll be available to help with the question and answer as well as, I believe, a representative from Public Works if necessary. I'll go through the presentation quickly as this is a presentation you all have seen previously. And then we will do a question and answer and then move on to the public hearing and then your deliberations. So why are we here this evening? Just as a recap, staff was directed to make administrative process changes to certain drainage adjustment applications. We're also correcting some Scrivener errors by taking out the term interim in multiple places throughout the code sections before you this evening in regards to the comprehensive plan as our comprehensive plan is fully adopted and not an interim plan any longer. We're also trying to solve the problem of ensuring that neighbors and citizens are informed when a drainage adjustment is being considered. Planning Commission made recommendation on draft code amendments on June 17th of this year after conducting a public hearing, hearing from the community and deliberating. And then city council did see this presentation and we went through the draft code as well during the study session on September 7th of this year. And there weren't, no direction from council to go back and make any tweaks or provide any additional information at that time. So as stated, these are administrative process changes. They are not surface water design regulation changes. The review process is in accordance with Chapter 1320 of the Sammish Municipal Code for Surface Water Runoff Regulations in regards to development proposals. It ensures that projects comply with the surface water design manual along with the Sammish addendum and drainage plans are reviewed by city staff during the land entitlement process. Currently, the land entitlement process for large-scale entitlements include preliminary short subdivisions, subdivisions, and unified zone development plans, for example, are a Type 2 process. There's public noticing and comment periods associated with that and a decision made by the director with the appeals going to the hearing examiner. For a Type 3 process, that includes public noticing, comment periods, and a public hearing before the hearing examiner where the hearing examiner would make a decision and then that appeal would be to Superior Court. Drainage adjustments are requested by the applicant to vary from a core requirement of the surface water design manual and the Sammish addendum. The applicant must propose a compensating or comparable alternative system. An alternate system is evaluated on safety, environmental impact, maintenance, and other factors, and the director has discretionary decision-making. So under the current process, there's, it's a standalone process. It occurs when requested by the applicant. It is a Type 1 decision, meaning there is no opportunity for public noticing or comment periods, and there's no appeal opportunity of the decision made either. Under the proposal, it would occur during the project planning and land entitlement process, meaning collectively with the project being proposed at that time. It would be associated either with a Type 2 or Type 3 decision. There's an opportunity for public noticing and comment periods. There would also be an appeal opportunity. And if it needed to occur after a land entitlement process did occur, it would be considered a Type 2 standalone process, which would still require public noticing and comment periods and allow for that appeal opportunity. So what we're trying to solve is how to ensure that neighbors and citizens are informed when a drainage adjustment is being considered. We did go through the code in detail during the study session. So I'm moving into that Planning Commission made a recommendation that the staff proposed changes be moved forward to city council along with additional language requiring that Type 2 process for single-family homes and associated prunesses in critical drainage areas are also included in this Type 2 or Type 3 process requirement, allowing for public noticing and comment periods and appeal periods. All of these code changes are included in the redline version that was attached with the agenda packet and ordinance that is before council for consideration this evening. With that, I would open it up to any questions the council may have of staff prior to moving on to the public hearing this evening.
Okay, I'm looking for any hands up and I don't see any. All right. So I think we'll move on to opening up the public hearing. Okay, let's open the public hearing. And do we have any, anybody who has called in for the public hearing?
Please raise your hand or press star nine on your phone if you would like to comment at this public hearing for the members of the public that are in the Zoom. I see one caller so far. I will convert you to a panelist. You'll be unmuted. And I believe this is Ms. Victor, so you'll have three minutes and I'll give you the 15-second time warning. I will now promote you.
Hi, this is Mary Victor and I've lived in Sammish 21 years. I wanted to thank staff and the Pub Planning Commission and all the public input that we had for the stormwater code amendments, which are really an administrative process decision. You've heard of variances and deviations maybe, but when you do a stormwater drainage request, it's called an adjustment and that is determined by the director as a Type 1 decision currently, which doesn't have any formal public noticing or input requirements. And I think it would be important for staff to, tonight, to identify who that director is. Is it the Director of Public Works in Stormwater or is it the Director of Community Development? Because I, I think that's in the code, but I don't remember off the top of my head. Basically, if you're a subdivision or short plat that needs a full or large drainage review, it now will require a Type 2 processing when the code, when these code changes are passed and adopted, if the project is not already part of a Type 2 or Type 3 process and it can even be a standalone request. Also, per problems and issues experienced and per public comment, the Planning Commission recommendations, drainage adjustments requested in critical drainage areas will be processed as a Type 2. I'm going to read from the third paragraph from page 81 out of 331 in the full agenda packet tonight. It is from the very fine staff bulletin and it says, "The intent of the proposed changes is twofold. First, staff believes it is important that neighboring and downstream properties be notified and given the opportunity to provide public comment on proposed changes to approved drainage plans as they may be impacted in their property or in the surrounding ecosystems. And second, staff wants to provide a neighbor or an applicant a pathway for appealing and approval or denial of a drainage adjustment." And I do think it's important to note at this point that whenever a project is bigger, it does deserve a bit more control and review and thus the subdivision, short plats, and full, large projects are included. And then furthermore, when a project is more constrained and are more complex due to multiple features or critical areas, more control and review is warranted and essential. So I just wanted to thank everybody again for all the work that's been done on this. I believe there are not issues with it. It's been carefully done and shown and I hope that city council will review this and approve the code changes for adoption as soon as possible. And special note again, thanks so much to the city staff and the commissions for all the work to do on this key topic. It is clean, well-presented code changes and also the information has been discussed well. Thank you. And then just cover who the director is, please.
Thank you for calling in. Do we have anybody else?
Mayor, I'd be happy to answer Mary's question if you'd like.
Yes, that would be great.
Yeah, so under Title 13, the Director of Public Works is the director responsible for making a decision on proposed drainage adjustments.
And, Lita, I know we received letters that were in our mailbox today. We want to make sure those also make it into record.
I see no more public commenters. So I will turn it over back to you, Mayor.
Okay, and I, again, I want to make sure that there's nobody that is listening that doesn't want to speak to ordinance for the city of Sammish relating to stormwater code amendments, amending Chapters 13.20, Surface Water Runoff Regulations, amending Chapter 19A point 12, Subdivisions and Short Subdivisions, amending Chapter 20.05, Procedures for Land Use Permit Applications, Public Notice Hearings and Appeals, and amending Chapters 21B and 21B point 85, Development Standards and Interim Stormwater Standards. If there is anybody, please raise your hand now if you are listening. Okay, excellent. All right. Well, then, that will conclude the public comment section. And we can go, so I can close that portion of the public hearing. And we can go into deliberation with the council. And now, council, did we have any comments, questions, deliberations that we wanted to have? Any questions for David Pyle? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Oh, I do. I'll say Councilmember Odell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, a really quick comment here. What I have seen of this change to the existing ordinance is all for the good and I think it's a nice step forward for the city. It may not be perfect, but we may be backward visiting it in the future, but it is certainly a definite improvement over the status quo. So David, thank you, to you and your staff and the Public Works people who've all had an input into this whole... an input into this whole thing. And also thank you to the public, who have commented very frequently on this particular issue. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
And Councilmember Stewart?
Staff, and thank
There you go.
And thank you to Mary Victor, not just the public in general, but thanks to Mary. I mean, Mary's been involved in stormwater. I mean, she's been involved in all things city-related for more years than some people here have lived here, but she's been deeply involved in stormwater. She really knows her stuff, and I think, David, you and all of your staff, I think you guys work well together, and I really appreciate the deep dive that that Mary does on that. I mean, you want to talk about a policy wonk, there's somebody who really thinks these scenarios through, so I think we should give her a special, you know, talk about the timeliness of the going the extra mile. That would definitely be Mary in this case, so thanks to all of you.
And Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah, are you looking for a motion to approve?
I am.
Okay, so moved that we approved the ordinance for the stormwater code amendments. Do I need to read the entire paragraph?
I'll second it.
Yeah, it's not.
You do not need to read the entire paragraph. I believe we can read 02021-533. Does that cover it, Mr. Pyle?
I believe it does.
Okay, we have got a first, we've got a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay.
Can we name it the Mary Victor Stormwater Code? Is that inappropriate? You know?
Yes.
Okay, seeing no other hands up. All in favor, say aye.
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 opposed? Excellent.
Thank you, council.
Okay, don't go too far, Mr. Pyle. Next up will be the development regulation updates.
Great, so I am waiting for our speakers this evening to be promoted to panelists, and while doing so, want to introduce the topic. This is the second council meeting, second council workshop on the proposed development regulations, Phase Two code updates, and transition to Unified Development Code, or UDC as it's known. Tonight with me, I have Evan Fisher, Senior Management Analyst, and Jeff Arango, who is the Planning Director with Framework Consultants. You met Jeff at the last meeting. Jeff will be providing a presentation. Evan and myself will be here to help fill in any gaps, and then returning it over to council discussion, where all three of us will attempt to field questions from the council.
Okay.
With that, turn it over to Jeff.
Okay, welcome to you both.
Great, thanks for the intro, David. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm just going to get my screen share set up and go into the presentation. Okay. Thank you. So briefly, our agenda for the presentation, we're going to do a brief recap of our last meeting with the council on September 14th, go through some of the questions and responses, go through the code refinements that we've done since that meeting, and discuss an issue that's come up related to phasing and bonding. Then we will preview some more of the Unified Development Code, and then finally go through Phase Three scope items and talk about next steps. So we'd like to start with the Phase Two timeline. This has been a really fantastic process. I want to commend the city on laying out a very good process for this project and all of the members of the community that have participated along the way. It's been really valuable in developing and refining the code amendments. So, starting in 2018, Phase One was completed, and David provided a very detailed overview of the Phase One items that were adopted. Following that, there was a line item in the city's budget to hire a consultant support, and that happened in the summer of 2020, when we were selected along with our partner Code Studio for the project. And then we had our kickoff in August of 2020, so just a little bit over a year ago. And one of the first engagement activities was setting up a community advisory group. We had several members participate, representing different stakeholder groups, including residents, members of the development community, engineers, designers, those types. And we started off with one-on-one interviews. It was a great way to start to build relationships and get input from their different perspectives about the code updates. And then we had four meetings with the community advisory group, and those were initially interspersed with meetings with the city council and the Planning Commission. So our first meeting with the community advisor group about a year ago in September, we had introductions, we went over sort of the ground rules, the scope of work, and the timeline for the project. If you'll recall, early in the project, we had a long matrix that we were discussing with different groups about the list of code topics and how they might be addressed, and those got sort of refined along the way and categorized into high, medium, and low priorities. We then had a joint city council and planning commission meeting where we kind of went over the list of code topics, got input, and finalized that that list and moved on into the process. We launched an online survey, and we previewed some of those results with you last time, and I believe we emailed the full survey results, which was a request from the previous meeting. And we got lots of valuable input, and I think the big takeaway from the survey is the community felt like there was room for improvement in terms of how the quality of new development, particularly residential development in the community, and that's, you know, what we're trying to improve through this process. Then we went back to the community advisory group. We updated the project timeline, reviewed some of the draft survey results and questions, and then we reviewed those code topics, the problem statements, and all of the different docket requests that were submitted by the public in terms of topics that they would like to have addressed. We met with the Planning Commission again in November to go over that list, review the initial survey results. We looked at a number of residential development examples within different zoning districts, and we had questions and input on the code summary. December was our third community advisory group meeting. We reviewed the survey results, the development examples, and again focused on the consolidated code topic summary. Moving into January, we had our final meeting of the community advisory group. We went through kind of our strategy for how we were going to address the different topics and got their input, and I would say we've largely stuck to that strategy. Certainly, we have taken an input and adjusted, but I think we had a good, I think, framework to deal with at that point, and we've largely carried that out through the process. Then, in March, we started working intently with the Planning Commission through a number of work sessions on the different code topics and the Unified Development Code. We first started with high priority topics in March, and then sort of worked our way down into the other categories. It was with the Planning Commission that we also did some of the code analysis that I presented at the last meeting to the to the city council. And that was really important in terms of understanding the dynamics and why development was happening the way it has been. And I think we were able to tell a compelling story about what the issues are, and that really helped inform the development of the neighborhood design standards, the site planning standards, particularly for, you know, single-family homes and other residential development, and then the clearing, grading, and tree retention changes were sort of workshopped at those meetings. We also provided an overview of the Unified Development Code. In April and May, we had further work sessions with the with the Planning Commission, again touching on some of the same topics and refining our direction on some of these issues that were being addressed as part of Phase Two. June, we had two other work sessions with the Planning Commission as well. One of those was focused on the Unified Development Code and the Planned Unit Development Proposal, which we did get fairly far into before the commission decided it should be delayed to Phase Three. We have one slide at the end of the presentation tonight where I can give an update in terms of where we landed on the Planned Unit Development Proposal at that time. A couple of other work sessions in July, leading up to the public hearing, which actually was on July. This this meeting was not a work session, it was actually the public hearing, and then at that public hearing, we got a recommendation to move it along to the city council and then began our discussions with you last meeting on September 14th. And then here we are today, October 19th, having another work session, and per the schedule that was established several months ago, we do have November 16th for a final work session where we would bring back the entire package of the Unified Development Code, which would include all of the proposed Phase Two changes, and we do have a copy of the Unified Development Code minus the Phase Two amendments that we can preview with you here in a few moments. And then we would have the public hearings in December and hopefully get to adoption by the end of the year with an effective date, you know, either January 1st or perhaps February 1st of 2022. So again, it's been a it's been a fantastic process. We really appreciate all of the input that we've received along the way, and again, I want to congratulate the council and the mayor and the, sorry, the city staff, the council and the mayor on committing to a really good and involved public process, which has really been the key, I think, to the success of this project to date. So in terms of the September 19th meeting recap, these are highlights of some of the issues that were raised in the questions from the council. So we just wanted to highlight some of those. Some of these have been addressed in the current code package. Some, we still need some final direction. And then lastly, there's a some items that would be delayed to a future work item such as Phase Three. So there's a question around parking requirements for accessory dwelling units, and that is addressed already in the current code. There's an additional requirement for a stall for accessory dwelling unit, and if there's already more stalls than are required just for the single-family home, then they wouldn't have to necessarily add another parking stall. There was a request for the full public survey results, and those were provided. There was a question around the Florida area ratio limits that are being proposed and a desire to ensure buildings are not too large for the site. That is the intent, the intention of that Florida area ratio standard, and it will impact the size of the home that's permitted relative to the lot, and it'll also inform for subdivisions, you know, how large applicants want to propose their lot size. And that lot size that is proposed will directly impact the type and style of home that could be developed on it. There were some comments from the school district standards that were discussed last time, and in particular, the proposed buffer. Initially, there was a proposal for a buffer of more like 100 feet for parking lots with some flexibility where it might prevent the the school from actually being developed or being able to contain all the facilities necessary to support the school. So that's an item where we do need some final direction from the council on that. We're happy to answer questions. And then a couple of issues that we've identified to look at for Phase Three, planning for housing affordability, and we think the proposal that we had been working on for the Planned Unit Development could be a significant stride by beginning to incentivize smaller units. I can talk about, when we get to that slide, what that would look like, reducing greenhouse gas emissions related to buildings and transportation, and then transitions between zoning districts is another issue that we would look to address in Phase Three. So, we have not made a lot of changes to the code proposal since the last meeting, but we did just want to highlight a few that we have made. We had met with Public Works just prior to the September meeting and have gone through their comments and made a couple of changes in response to some of the input that they provided. One was clarifying the on-street parking standard. So in the neighborhood design section, there is a sort of right sizing standard for on-street parking, so we don't end up with unnecessarily wide streets and higher traffic speeds and potentially safety issues. So we just clarified that in the neighborhood design section. There was also in the in the neighborhood design section some references to other stormwater regulations, and we cleaned that up so it's more clear which standards are being referenced. We modified the maximum length for dead-end streets, so it's consistent with the public work standards, and that was another piece of input that they provided. And then we had proposed to change a UZDP permit to a type three process, which would be reviewed by the hearing examiner, but we've eliminated that proposal, and so, under the current code, the UZDP process would remain a type two director decision with an appeal to the hearing examiner. So those are the only changes that have remained since the last meeting, but we didn't want to highlight those for you. So now we're going to introduce somewhat of a new topic. It's something that's already embedded in the code, but it's not clarified in the way that it should be, and there's a bit of conflict between different parts of the of the of the code. So the issue is, traditionally in Sammamish, when developers come in and do a subdivision, they have to construct all of the improvements, the streets, the sewer, you know, all of the improvements before they can file their final plat and begin to sell lots. Many other cities allow applicants to phase or bond for those improvements, which would allow them to file the final plat with a bond or a financial guarantee, so that if they somehow did not meet their obligation, the city could come in and complete the improvements. But what it what it does allow by having what's often referred to as a paper plat, it allows applicants to be able to sell parcels and raise capital to fund the improvements. And it supports a model where maybe the folks that are developing the lots are not the same entity that, you know, are designing and funding the subdivision. And one of the new proposals that we have in the code package for you to consider is that when you go and get approval for a subdivision and you're installing the infrastructure, you're not allowed to go in and just mass grade and clear all of the individual development sites. You're not permitted under the current proposal to clear and grade an individual building lot until you get a land use approval that shows a site plan of how you're going to develop that. And so that's making a stronger connection between the site development process and sort of the clearing and grading piece. And and that's important because we're hoping to sort of minimize the amount of mass grading and clearing that has to happen to allow for residential development to happen. And in some of our discussions with the master builders, they were, I would say, characterize it as supportive of the change on the clearing and grading if they were able to bond for improvements and be able to, you know, sell parcels to raise capital for funding those improvements, and that would allow the individual parcels and trees to remain until such time as they're developed, which in larger properties or projects could be, you know, a year or two. And so, you know, those trees and those sites would would remain in their natural state until that time. So, back to the code issue. One, there is an RCW at the top of the slide that's referenced, and it does, I think, require cities to at least allow this option, and there can be some discretion as to whether the the city allows it on a case-by-case basis, but it does seem to indicate that the cities have to have code to allow it. And Sammamish does, to some degree, in 27A, there is a section that talks about financial guarantees, and it does talk about phasing and bonding. It is a remnant from King County Code. However, if you go into other, the other section of code on subdivisions, it talks about all of the improvements needing to be constructed before you can file the final plat. And so, we see this issue as important to achieving the purpose of the the Phase Two updates, which is to improve development outcomes in Sammamish and have development that is designed to fit in with the natural landscape, that minimizes the removal of trees and grading. And so we see this as as important to allowing that to happen. We did do a little bit of research, looking at some of your peer communities in Redmond, Kirkland, and Nissiqua, for example, they all allow this practice to happen as well, and it is pretty typical, in my experience, as a public sector planning director for allowing this type of phased development. So what we would propose is is down here at the bottom, the last bullet and the subbullets, that this would be a review by the director if there is proposed to be a bonding and phasing plan. It must demonstrate that phasing and bonding will support application of the neighborhood design principles and standards, will result in improved development outcomes for the desired character of Sammamish, and will allow for individual and will allow for individual lots remain in a relatively natural state until such times they're developed, such as limiting tree removal and grading. So that's, that's, we think, an important issue, and we look forward to your questions and input on that topic. Okay, the next section of the presentation, we're going to talk a little bit about the unified development code strategy. And we got into this a little bit at the last meeting, but not too far. And we just wanted to really explicitly lay out our, our strategy on this. So right now, the, the code is hosted in Code Publishing. And when Code Publishing or MuniCode, which are the two most popular hosting services came out, it was really a fantastic thing. It made codes much more accessible, easy to search, available on, online. You didn't have to have a paper code book. You know, when you update your code, they could help with the codification process and the legal review. But I think now increasingly, communities are seeing that there's some limitations to that, particularly in sort of the graphic presentation and layout is a limiting factor. And there's now new tools that, that cities can use to host their codes and, and make them more accessible. And so this is an example from Raleigh, North Carolina, where they're currently hosting and managing their own code online using a tool called Flipping Book, which sort of provides sort of a navigation tool to be able to do a lot of the same things that you would do on Code Publishing, but in sort of, it's embedded into the city's website. And that allows you to also include other information that might be helpful for applicants or members of the community that may be interested in a development project for how to access the code and access information for how to kind of participate in that pro, in that process. So this is an example of the Raleigh code in Flipping Book. And we have a PDF of the UDC that I put into Flipping Book. And after the presentation is done, I'll open that up and, and navigate around that for you a little bit. So this is the style guide that we previewed last time. It's got fonts and colors and a logo. And we did do the accessibility test. This was raised by one of the council members, really important issue. We did run the accessibility test. It did pass in terms of the colors and the fonts that are being used. So we feel confident on that and will certainly run that test again before we finalize the, before we finalize the code. So this is a UDC guide that Evan Fisher put together. Thank you, Evan. And this goes through here on the left-hand side, all of the titles of the existing code that'll become part of the new code. And so you can see here, title thirteen through twenty-one B, all will become part of the new code, and they will get renumbered and reorganized. And we'll show you what that looks like in, in a minute. And so we have a compiled version of the, the UDC that's going into the code with all those titles renumbered and sort of reprioritized in terms of the order we think that applicants and designers should be thinking about the code in terms of its influence on the design of a project, right? So neighborhood design is sort of front and center. Sustainability in the environment is upfront because we think those are really important things to be considered at the start of a project and sort of how to design sites in a sensitive manner with minimal impacts to the environment. And then the, the final UDC, again, will have all of those titles. It'll have links that are clickable. It'll have cross references that'll direct you to other parts of the code. We're envisioning this being adopted as a repeal and a replace. So the, those titles would be repealed and the unified development code would be adopted to replace that. And it would start a new sort of series of legislative history as the code is updated. Then that would be documented going forward. Okay, so that's the unified development code. I'll finish the presentation and then I'll pull up Flipping Book and, and give you a preview of that as well. So phase three scoping, there was actually an initial list of phase three topics that were identified in the phase two scope. We've gone back and looked at those. They were presented previously to the council in some of those early meetings. So at the top of the list is further unified development code cleanup and refinement. So while we have created the unified development code structure and brought in all of the titles of the existing municipal code that are applicable to development, there are still some issues with word choice and clarity. And, you know, to be honest, a lot of the, the code is simply the same code, but sort of re-formatted in the new numbering system with all of the phase two updates as well. So we think there's another round of, of sort of auditing and refining the unified development code to improve its clarity and readability and usability. The planned unit development code was an issue we got pretty far down the line with the planning commission before they recommended that it be deferred to phase three. So there's more time to kind of grapple with the potential impacts of that program. So that would be a main part of, of phase three and likely going back to the planning commission with some workshop meetings to, to address that. In the initial list of phase three topics that were in our scope and were discussed early in the process, there is architectural or further kind of standards that would be used as part of a design review program. Many cities have design review programs, including Redmond, for example, and Issaquah for, for two nearby cities. The city of Simamish does not, and it's something that could be considered as part of phase three, and it would be another sort of layer onto the existing or the newly proposed neighborhood design standards. The bonding and phasing issue, that could be included in phase two. If, if there was a desire, we could draft, finish drafting that code and include it as part of this package, or it could be deferred to phase three. We're looking for input on that as well. The issue of a green building code and addressing sustainability in the code. This is related to the issue of greenhouse gas emissions that was brought up at the last meeting. If there's a desire to move forward with that, that could be included in, in the phase three scope as well. Measures to promote affordable housing. Again, I think there, there were some strides made in the planned unit development proposal to incentivize smaller units that are more affordable, not necessarily, you know, subsidized units or perpetually affordable units, but those that would certainly hit a di- different price point than some of the larger homes being developed. Sewer connection requirements, we did make some changes in phase two, but it's a complicated issue. And we did not get as far along, I think, as we had maybe initially anticipated. And we know that's a continued, ongoing issue for the city. Landscape standards for single-family residential homes. Transitions between zones from commercial and residential to potentially allow some higher density, more affordable units that are in proximity to commercial districts is another topic that we've discussed with staff. And based on this and your input tonight, we would plan to come back at the November work session with a preliminary scope on, on phase three and, and what that would look like.
Jeff, I'm going to stop you there because we've got a couple of hands up. Councilmember Trin.
Well, I don't know if this is the right time because I, I, I do have questions throughout your presentation. So I don't know if we should wait till you're finished showing us the flipbook or if you want to take those now. Jeff, this is to Jeff Orango.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to take your questions now. I think the, the flipbook will be fun to show, but I, I'm more interested in your questions. And, and so let's, let's, let's go for it.
Well, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go backwards then, okay? So stay right here. So the first would be on the transitions between zones from commercial and resident. Would you also, I mean, are you also including the idea because Simamish is unique that you, there are transition zones? That we are, we are a transition zone as a city from a, a dense housing or density and transit to a single-family home to the rural area. So we are the buffer between the kind of what I call the big city and the farmland. And so is, is that something that you could look at? That is similar to what you're saying here, but it's actually got a different outlook, outcome.
Yeah, it, it's, it's similar to what you described, but this would be within the city limits. So to your example.
Mine would be in the city limits as well.
Yeah, this is specifically looking at areas where there's commercial and residential districts where in some cases, there may be commercial and single-family. And this would potentially look at creating zones that could provide more of a blended transition and might provide some areas for, you know, different types of housing that could be in proximity to commercial areas and then provide that sort of smooth transition, however you define that, to the single-family lower-density development outside of that boundary.
Okay, because I'm going to get to the, to I think what you're talking about there. So I think you need to add something to phase three then about that Simamish is a transition zone. We're transitioning between zones from high density, which is Bellevue, Redmond, Issaquah, to the rural. So I, I'd, I'd suggest that we make that adjustment as well in phase three. Okay, second, okay, thanks. Second one is, I'm trying to keep this short because we're already over time. Design review program, can you just help me understand? Is that, is that a program? Or is that that we are adding design standards to our code, which for the most part, I'm just going to say they don't exist. There are some, so don't get me wrong there. I, I know there are some, but is that about adding design standards to our code?
Yes, that, that's, that's one piece of it. It usually also involves some type of additional review, and there's different ways that that could be done, whether it's a board or it's done by staff. But fundamentally, it's about adding the standards that would form the basis for the review program.
Thank you, Jeff. I was pretty sure that was going to be your answer. On the next one is then this planned unit development. Who, who would you, so this is a question directly for you and because I, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm a, you're an expert. So who would you recommend for important people to be representatives of the community that would be on the planning commission that would help build this planned unit development for phase three of the scoping? What kind of people would you put on a, a planning commission that would help? Because if that's the goal that's going to come up next, I would have certain, I think there should be certain, or maybe I'm wrong, but I think there should be certain people are, are planning commission to help us get to this as a, as a, if this is a goal. Do you have any idea who you would, like, just throw out some ideas or concepts?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the model that we used for, for phase two has been fantastic. The combination of the community advisory group and the representation of the stakeholders on, on that sort of committee was really valuable early in the project in terms of defining the issues and, and solutions. So I would recommend a similar group like that. And then, you know, working with the planning commission was fantastic as well. And I have confidence that if we had, you know, some additional time to go back and work with them, I think we could come out with a, with a solid proposal. I think it, it really just came down to there was so much that we were trying to deal with, and the planned unit development made more of a fundamental change that it just became too much, I think, to, to grapple with at that time. So I, I think if we just sort of replicated the process we used and had those people in the room, as well as members of the public that participated, you know, I think that would be successful.
I can, I can add on to that just a little bit. So, so in working with the planning commission, number one, we, I, I feel we have a great planning commission currently. That, you know, to include this diverse viewpoints in the community. They, they bring things up that we didn't think of, which we really, which we really are fortunate to have planning commissioners that ask these questions. But in the, in, in the future of appointments, you know, we always want to look for people that are articulate and outspoken on, on their concerns. You know, what we don't want is planning commissioners that are quiet and just sort of rubber stamp whatever the city staff bring in front of them. We, we would prefer to collaborate with them in conversation to help build a better code that helps better represent the interests of the citizens. So they would need to be, you know, integrated into their communities and understand what their community's interests are and, and not just their own personal viewpoints, but the viewpoints of others as well. And they, they have to be aware and respectful of the full range of viewpoints that might be out there in the community. And then having those type of people on our planning commission are really helpful for us as we're vetting issues and doing the policy work, background work for the council. So that when we bring it to you, we have had opportunity to view, to, to vet the issues and hear from different perspectives and have had those conversations about why it's a good thing or why it's a bad thing. So I think that, that's really good. That's a, that would be a really good thing to consider in future appointments to the planning commission for projects like this.
Thank you, David. I, I totally agree with you. The, the last, I have three others and then I'm done. So phase build, because you guys are asking for some specifics. So actually, Madam Mayor, I don't know if this is the time. Those were my questions, and now I have my responses to the, to the input that they want or direction. So maybe I should hold that.
Yeah, why don't you hold that until the end?
Thank, I, I'm, thank you for the time. Thank you.
And Councilmember Odell, did you have questions?
Yeah, I do. And, but before I get to the questions, I want to also echo that I totally agree with what David Pyle just said about members of the planning commission and the usefulness of them. I think it's right on, and I hope we can continue to find good people to serve on it. Jeff, how close are we to the end of your thing before I start asking stuff?
We, we had one more slide on the planned unit development, so this is the second to last slide.
And, and Jeff, at the interest of time, we could even forego that if needed as it's something that we're proposing to put on phase three and need additional work. So if you wanted to just proceed with conversation with the council, we'd be happy to do that, too.
Okay. I've got four things to bring up here, and I'll try to be brief. I'm back on the setbacks, the buffers for schools. You're currently proposing a hundred feet and now we're liking it thirty feet. Am I correct?
Correct, based on the letter and suggestion from the school district and some public comments as well, yes.
And were there any, was there any input from the residents that lived next door to these things?
Not specifically that I'm aware of.
Yeah, not specifically.
I, I think before we just rubber stamp this one, I think we need to get some input on that. Because frankly, I'm not sure I want a bus burn thirty feet from my back fence with probably a good view of it as opposed to having a broken up view. So I'm, I'm further to stay with a hundred feet. On the second item, on the improvement construction bonding, does that, are there any restrictions on where that could be, that bonding money could be spent? Does it have to be spent in that neighborhood or can be, can it be moved anywhere?
Specifically for that, that neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. Overall, I think the unified development code is an absolute plus. I like having everything cleaned up like we did in stormwater and also put in one place. Like it's a straightforward, it's a step forward. We'll continue to ding with it as we go through, and I'm sure future councils will come up with revisions. But at a point, fourth, on phase three, the energy use reduction issue hasn't been any conversation about the use of subsidies for improving energy use. For instance, subsidizing solar panels, subsidizing insulation, increased insulation density, windows, that type of thing. And perhaps even in increasing the tree retention on the lot so as you have a couple more trees that could provide afternoon shade when it's a hundred and eight like it was this summer.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly something we could look into. I mean, there are existing programs and, and tax credits and, and subsidies, you know, offered outside of, of the city government. And maybe part of this is, is making those, you know, making people aware of those. And there might be some incentives you could also build into the code in terms of benefits that you could get from implementing this. So it's, you know, something that we would explore as, as part of phase three and sort of looking at green building practices and infusing the code further with, with sustainability.
So, so it would, it would need to be regulatory and programmatic. And that's something we could take on as phase three. And, and I, the way I see that is, is that, you know, one, one of the biggest opportunities we have as a community is retrofitting existing as opposed to just focusing on building new. Not only because retrofitting existing retains existing affordable or, or middle housing stock that we are losing. So if you're able to focus on retrofit and find ways to incentivize that or get grants for that, that is a real win for the community.
Absolutely, thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. Um, as far as other Phase Three items around, uh, you know, kind of greenhouse gas emission reduction and energy, I, I do think, uh, Dave, David, you're really on to it. Um, there may be some new development, but the reality is we already have twenty-two-ish thousand, you know, units in the city. And so if we really wanna make a substantial impact, it needs to be focused there. Um, and I'm glad to hear you talk about it being both uh, regulatory and programmatic. And I do think that there are ways to incentivize people, uh, through both of those that will have very positive impacts on the community. So, um, and hopefully we can, um, tie those to other programs that we do across the city around, you know, electrifying infrastructure um, and things like that. So, uh, I would, I would put in a, a big plus one for all of those areas. Um, it's just critical and, and I think we are, um, a little bit behind on those. Uh, and again, not being critical of you guys and all the great work you've been doing, but we just need to make sure that we make that a priority and get some of that done rather quickly. So thanks for that. Really appreciate it. Um, I did have one question. Um, I know you guys are cleaning up all this code and it'll be a repeal and a replace. Um, what about other code that may reference the development code? How are we making sure that any changes to, you know, numbering and stuff is being updated correctly?
Well, that's, that, the, the good news here is we have a consultant that's really good at this. Um, one of the sub consultants, Code Publishing, or not Code Publishing, excuse me, Code Studio, um, does this for multiple jurisdictions and all around the country. Um, so what they're doing is they're going into our entire municipal code and they're looking for the tentacles, if you will, that reach out into other sections and, and reference, cross references, et cetera. And they're replacing those references with a, a corrected reference to the new UDC when the reference is external to the UDC so that it now points to the right place.
So would all those changes be coming back then as well? Um, cuz we'd have to update all of those code references as well. Okay.
Yeah, those, there, there'll, there'll be a, a correction sheet where they'll, it'll show all those citations that point to the UDC. They will now point to the UDC with that updated code section.
And then, um, I know that this isn't necessarily your scope, David, but is, is there thought of doing an effort where we move all of our municipal code into something like this? So that it's all in one place and it's all easy to reference and search and everything?
We would sure love to do that. Um, that would require collaboration with our counterparts, um, and other departments, including, you know, parks, public works, police, fire, um, as they are all owners of those code sections. Um, however, you know, we see this as a nationwide trend away from, the, the reason why Code Publishing, um, was so great was back in the day when we were living both in a paper book and online. Um, and that's how I, I learned first in a paper book, then the online version was added. And Code Publishing was always the one that would provide paper code supplements to your code books, which is why they were so important. Now that we have opportunity to move away, you know, I don't know any staff or any, any contractors or consultants out there that still use the paper book. Everybody uses the online platform. And now that we're all living in the online world, we really need to embrace all of the tools that it offers. And it's, it's a expansive world compared to the, the traditional code publishing realm that we've been living in.
Totally, yeah. Um, so that's probably something that, you know, we need to consider, uh, again, sooner rather than later, because I think that the efficiency benefits for staff could be huge, right? And it could probably pay for itself rather quickly by getting our, our code into one place where it's easy to search and reference, uh, not to mention the benefit to the community. So uh, I would be a, I would be in favor of, of getting that onto a, a work plan, uh, again, sooner rather than later. Um, yeah, uh, so thanks for this. Uh, really appreciate the work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Um, so I'm not sure what the best way to convey, um, uh, the, in the specific code language itself. I have several, um, suggested changes or alterations, and I'm not sure what the best way to convey that to staff is, if that's to send over what I have, if it's to kind of highlight some of it here at the council meeting. What's your preference?
So the, the good news is, is we have one more workshop on this prior to shifting to public hearing mode. Um, we were hopeful to bring back the, the actual fully populated unified development code, the UDC, at the next meeting and be working out of that at the next meeting prior to jumping into the public hearings so that you all were familiar with it. Um, that said, we, i- i- if you wanted to walk through the topical areas now so everyone's aware of them and then send us the, the, the proposed code amendments. Um, so this is a very similar request, which you're asking now as to what we did in Phase One, um, where the council had had opportunity to dig into the code and saw, saw what it was trying to achieve and had some very good, um, offers of, of changes that could be made to add to the the effectiveness of what we were trying to do. Um, so definitely really welcome this and um, you know, what we can do is if you wanna walk through the topical areas now and then send over your code package, the code packages to the whole council so everyone can see it. And then we'll, we'll roll it into the UDC and bring it back and we'll highlight it with comment bubbles in the next packet that goes out. So you'll see where your, your code amendments landed and we might, we might take, um, artistic liberty and, and maybe edit awards for here to, here or there if, if we see it as needed and we'll let you know that. Um, and, and then we can move forward that way if it's acceptable to you.
Okay. And some of my comments may be easily explained by the fact that we are taking old code and replacing it with this unified, unified development code. Because what I found in many of the areas is that it felt like we were redoing what we'd already done. It talked about tree preservation and wanting to keep them in stands, for example. It talked about, um, you know, kind of wanting to preserve natural features. Um, talked about tree retention. Like, I feel like these are things we've already done. Is this language in here because we're replacing old code? Is that why it feels somewhat?
No, no. Yeah, so, so what we've learned since some of these changes have come about, um, at least as long as I've worked with the code since 2015, um, is that, uh, the community and the, um, stakeholders or shareholders that use the codes um, are not necessarily code wonks like we are at City Hall. And they don't really understand, you know, so often we hear from builders and property owners, homeowners, just tell me what you want. Tell me what you want me to do. So what we've done is we've add, we added design guidelines that tell them what we want them to do. Those design guidelines are not intended to be, uh, quite specific, you know, um, what, what's the right word, criteria for approval, for script, yeah. So, so what we, what we're trying to do is we're trying to get a, a customer who's using the code to start out reading through the what do you want us to do? This is what we want you to do. These are your guidelines. These are what you're trying, we're trying to achieve. And then down below in the next section or in other places in the code, like the tree retention standards or the clearing limits or the grading limits, those are actual things that we, we have to, they have to demonstrate that they've met that, that, that criteria to get approval.
Okay, that makes me feel better cuz I think under twenty-one dot thirty dot two hundred A, it starts talking about, um, wanting, it says, we should retain the form of the land and the major vegetation to the extent possible fitting development into its natural context rather than reshaping the land. And I'm like, wait a second, we already made code for that. So, okay, that explains that. Um, I will note, like, some of them are just kind of, um, I don't even know if we wanna call them Scrivener's Errors, but um, it talks about twenty-one A dot thirty dot two hundred B. It says, Sammamish cares about their green northwest character rather than our northwest character. Um, and I can put stuff like that um, and just email it over. Um, I'm just looking through my notes here. So the connected community thing, um, I recognize that part of that comes, um, from our, um, from what we, what we already have. So in our public work standards, um, and the like. Uh, but I just think there's extenuating circumstances to which, um, and, and if this is that kind of, you know, this is what we want you to do, then words like shall and should, we have to be really careful with. Um, because it says, um, just as an example, new development change shall improve connections for people walking and biking with, with sidewalks and trails. And, and I think, you know, this may be my own personal grind, but I don't think it should be shall. It should be a should because not, we can't, um, anticipate every circumstance to which a developer will come in. And sometimes it's just not, uh, feasible to require connections because we may be sacrificing other things that we value, like our forest or wildlife, um, in order to make those connections. So there's just some of that kind of overarching, um, thing. And then I, I did find some, um, interesting, I, I felt like juxtaposition from what we did in our development code um, recently and what was, um, kind of prescribed here and, sorry, kicking dog off my lap. Um, so it says, um, twenty-one A dot thirty dot two hundred D talks about family friendly, family friendly neighborhoods um, and wanting to enjoy some of the amenities. And it says neighborhoods should include places to spend time with play areas and benches. And didn't we remove the whole requirement for play areas? And we said, okay, instead of creating these like wonky little playgrounds in all these neighborhoods, which no one uses, we wanted to put that back in their backyards so that we could space the houses out a little bit more. So this felt counter to what we did in code previously and I couldn't quite figure out that one.
So I don't, so I, I don't think we ended up striking the requirement for open and rec space as part of subdivisions of a certain size.
But did we give them the option?
We, I don't think we gave them the option.
Okay, I thought we had.
As a result, I don't recall that, that code section, that code section being changed. Um, it's not to say we couldn't take that up in Phase Three and see if we should do away with this completely. Um, I know that we, you know, we, we heard from some of the members of our community advisory group that said that those, they loved those areas. Um, so it's, it's kind of a mixed bag and,
Yeah.
Um, on, on the one hand, it's a lot easier to manage with an HOA that's defunct because oftentimes we deal with HOAs that are dysfunctional that, that don't have leadership and that aren't gonna do the maintenance to that tot lot. And the thing ends up falling apart and becoming a hazard. And we'd rather, under that scenario, we'd rather the, the rec space be incorporated into the individual lots so the individual homeowners take ownership and maintain it. Um, that was, I think, some of the premise behind that. Um, so definitely open to suggestions on that. If you want us to strike this, we could do that. Um, the, the, um, the other one, going back to, um, the one that you had mentioned prior, trying to remember what that one was. I just twitched gears in my head and lost it for a second.
Uh, connections and shells.
Connections. So that, that, that comes from a, a disconnect that we have between code and comp plan. Where the comp plan envisions this connected community, you know, and trails and pathways for people to get around. So if you wanna walk to school, you don't have to go two and a half miles around the neighborhood to get to your school. You can cut through paths to get there, right? That's really a, a great asset in the community. Um, but, but one of the issues that we've had is that when we're in front of the hearing examiner on the, um, Big Rock Fiesta project was one. Um, we, we saw value in maintaining a public easement through the middle of that, of the, the backside. I guess it would have been the east side of the project heading north, south and, and requiring the platter to dedicate, um, you know, a, a width of right of way through there, not for a road necessarily. We, we, we knew that there, there would be a valuable connection there in the long term, but we didn't have any language um, in our code that allowed us to get that. And we actually had the builder in agreement to dedicate that. And then the, the hearing examiner came back and said, you have no authority to require that. I'm striking it. It's not part of the project. Um, and we kinda scratched our heads and said, well, that really isn't a good outcome. So here we are trying to add that back to the code so that if ever in front of the examiner again on that issue, we have code language where we can require that.
So, I, I mean, it makes sense in certain circumstances and I'm, I, you know, of course, I agree with you when you say, you know, you'd rather have kids to be able to walk. And it's not just kids, right? I mean, just, you know, generally speaking, having better connections is good for everyone in certain circumstances. There are other circumstances where having connections, especially through, you know, a dedicated open space is a negative. Um, and that being for those of wildlife. I mean, a lot of the wildlife use those as their corridors. And we, you know, we have a myriad of wildlife here in the city. I don't need to name them all. But you start putting a bunch of people through there walking, um, and kids are not quiet. I know this firsthand. Um, and we start to, you know, make our wildlife move somewhere else and they keep having to move somewhere else. And so I, that's why I'm kind of conscientious about um, some of these requirements about, um, I think there was another, you know, shall. You, you know, if you can't put a road through there, through your, you know, then you have to have a, a pathway. Well, I think there are extenuating circumstances when we don't wanna have a pathway. Um, either it doesn't provide, you know, a, a connection that's, you know, either one that would be utilized often or really does, um, potentially damage a wildlife corridor. And I'm thinking specifically of like E-Bright Creek. Um, you would not want people walking down a ravine, um, that's eighty feet deep back up. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff in there and frankly, I think that's a great wildlife corridor that we would not wanna put a pathway through.
So, so would you be okay then if we added qualifying factors that shall present a public benefit?
I did. I've actually already taken, I've already taken a stab at that so I can send over, uh, my language on those. Yeah, um, so um, I think there was, I, I saw Tom, um, Odell make a comment in the, um, that popped up on my screen and I don't, so his comment, because the general public, I don't think has access to our comments there, was that Heritage Hills has a well-used park. I get that. That's a huge park. Um, but when you look at my neighborhood's park, which is a small little triangle with a, a, um, small, non-functional, um, playground set on it, it doesn't get used. In fact, rarely is anyone from our neighbor, neighborhood ever in that park cuz it's just, it's not user-friendly. And it's those little pocket parks that I was kind of referencing. And that's really what we're going to see anymore in developments. We're not going to see the magnitude of a Heritage Hills, um, come to fruition anytime in Sammamish. There's just not enough land left to do that. So we're looking at the reality of a pocket park.
So twenty-one A thirty-two hundred D is in the, the guidelines again. So that's the, that's trying to get the point to the developer. Now, this could even manifest itself in the form of, you know, benches on the street where, you know, as part of the streetscape where there's benches to sit on or, you know, that there's usable, um, space that's not in the street for kids to play, right? It's kind of trying to provide just a little more, um, community-minded space.
Yep. And I can send over kind of the general gist of my notes cuz the, I mean, the open space comments, um, are, are later on in a different section, but, um, I'm just looking through here to see if there's, I think, like, the connectivity was one of the ones that I had some reservations on um, and open space. But, um, this, it makes sense that this is just kind of the, their guiding principles as to what they need to, to do. And then, then they've gotta get down deep into the code when, to actually produce that application.
What, what's also helpful for, for, for the whole council, for staff is if there are items that you see that are a no-go for you, where you, where it would basically push you to not vote in favor of this, of this code package. Um, that's, that's really important for the staff to know. Um, and then if there, there are those items where, hey, we really wanna just fine-tune this language and make sure we're getting the right outcome that, that we're thinking we're gonna get, that's different. That's something that we can really work on, um, in the next couple of weeks before we come back to you for your next workshop and you'll see the, the changes. And then you'll have opportunity to do any final wordsmithing at that next workshop.
Okay. So I guess the takeaway here is that a deal killer for me is twenty-one A dot thirty dot two hundred where it says new development shall improve connections. And I think it should be a should because there are just, there's simply extenuating circumstances. So I would, um, yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
That's all Karen. I'm good.
Okay. Uh, next is Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, thank you. Um, honestly, every single one of the pieces, points that I had written down here. Honestly, every single one of the pieces, points that I had written down here have been covered by my other council members, so good job, everybody, and keep us moving along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Odell.
One last brief comment. The Heritage Hills Park, if you haven't seen it, is worth a visit, because it's multifunctional. There are trails that connect the neighborhood into the park, which itself has a soccer field on it, but the soccer field also doubles as a stormwater detention area during the wet season, to, and it's called, I call it like heritage at that point. But the, there are two features in that park which are very popular. One is the swimming hole, which is active for the warm months in the summer. But the thing that's used most year-round is actually the playground area for the little kids, and they're in there all the time, come rain or come shine, in January, February, June, and December. One last thing, and that is the right-of-way for the pass is wide enough, so that actually helps the tree cover in the area as well. So that's another plus. We may not have many more opportunities to do this sort of thing. We missed one at, with the Connor Jarvis property, but there may be still some, on the eastern part of town, where we could look at doing this sort of thing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask about the timing. The one question I have is, I, it makes me a little bit nervous to have a public hearing on December 21. I just can't imagine that on December 21, that coming to a city council public hearing is going to be anyone's top priority. Is there any way to adjust that schedule so we're not, you know, asking the public to have to come and give their, I mean, this is, development code's a big deal, right? And so we should make it as accessible as possible to people.
So we could, the council could, and the way this has been working, you know, this has been, I feel, as Jeff said, a really good process. And it is possible that we could wrap it up, the meeting prior. What we did was we offered a two-part hearing if the council wanted, had additional conversation they wanted to have, but we have advertised, or we will be advertising the hearing soon, and we could just show it as that meeting prior. Evan, can you remind me of what that prior date is?
I do think two.
Yeah, it's December 7.
I do think two is good, because if there are, if there is significant feedback in the first one, right, I feel like it's important to have a second one. I don't know if it's feasible to have it be the 7th and the 14th, to have it be that back-to-back, but that's just something I think we should consider.
So we'll, we'll check with the city clerk and the city manager on that. The issue there is that we'd have to switch that meeting for a workshop to a regular business meeting, because we can't have a hearing and an action meeting at a workshop.
Totally fair, yeah. So again, I think it's great to have two, I think this is important enough to have that kind of feedback. I know that, you know, we've gotten feedback from folks before that they want the ability to provide input and have, you know, have that input actually might be able to get included, and I think that's really important, you know, not just going through the motion of asking for input. Now, you also made a comment that there might be, you know, the November 16 meeting, maybe we'll actually have something that's pretty complete, and I think the sooner we can get information out to the public and start getting feedback from them, that will also help. So anything you guys can do there, I know you're already working really hard, but that, I just think this is so, so, so important for people to have the ability to see it, review it, give them time, and provide feedback that we might actually consider, and not just go through the motions.
And that's one of the reasons why we're working really hard to get this all buttoned up and pushed out as the final version at the next workshop, so that you'll see that as a council, the public can see that, and then they'll all be, you know, it helps, so that we're not transitioning at the point of public hearing to a completely new-looking document. One thing, one positive thing that I have to say is that with the December 7 to 14, it's, the meetings are close together, so we don't tend to lose as much knowledge in between meetings, right? It actually helps facilitate an outcome, so if there's a way to do that, I would support that. We'll definitely have to check with the city clerk and the city manager on that, and check with council availability, as other council members might have other events that are happening that evening, so.
All right. Well, I, you know, for what it's worth, I'm in favor of making that an actual working meeting, as opposed to just a study session. So if it enables us to get more public participation, and the reality of people attending meetings on December 21, I think is pretty low, so.
That's fair.
Thanks for that, David, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Going once, going twice.
So Mayor, Mayor, if I could wrap this up for us, one, one thing that we do ask is if you do have any ideas for, you know, nits or tweaks to the code language, to please send them our way, be happy to take a look at those and try and integrate them in with some comment bubbles to identify where we did that. We always really appreciate suggestions on ways to make our codes read better and be more effective, so thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, moving forward then. Okay, next thing up is, oh, this should go relatively quickly, will be the Bluma, and this again is going to be Jeff, David, Doug. I'll let you guys take this one away.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and city manager. The order of our speakers tonight will be myself, I'll be doing some introductions, talking about general purpose of the EIS, and some really brief history highlights. David Pyle will help us through some of the boundaries and guidelines, or guardrails that we have related to the particular EIS. Lindsay will be giving us an in-depth look at the scheduling options that are in your packet, and Doug will bring a closure to it with kind of a summary. Then we have Lisa Marshall available for legal support, and I will endeavor to play quarterback to answer questions or direct questions as they come on this topic. Doug, do you have the slide up?
I believe I do. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so on to Slide Two, Doug. Great, so the purpose of tonight's meeting is focused on obtaining council direction slash policy guidance on scheduling of next steps. One of the pathways forward is for the council to complete their review by December of this year, so that the balance of the work to create the final EIS can be completed as scheduled, and the final document published in March of 2022. Any significant changes to schedule or changes to alternatives may cause delays, may cause the need for additional costs or more money, and/or both. Next slide. So the policy questions we have tonight, there's really four, and we'll kind of get into that, but the first one is, is do you want to have a workshop? Because a workshop will guide us, an opportunity for council to have dialogue and participation back and forth with staff and the consultants. Then we're seeking tonight also a council direction on, do you want to hold a public hearing, based on comments that we received during the comment period? We think there's an opportunity to do so. Does the council also wish to select a preferred alternative? The reason we ask that question, because technically you don't have to select a preferred alternative, it's highly recommended but not required. And then lastly, if yes to one and two above, does the city council want to prioritize holding the meetings necessary to select a preferred alternative and hold a public hearing before the end of the year? Next slide. This is an added slide that Doug created based on some input from the city manager's office, basically what we're trying to figure out is kind of a flow chart here, and work towards these critical decisions related to scheduling. And so we're asking the question, do you want to hold a workshop? And if so, depending upon how you flow through this, we're either going to have to redo and punt into 2022, or with the options that Lindsay will present to us here shortly, we can stay on track by the end of the year. Next slide. So going back in time, just a handful of years ago, a few years ago, the city was struggling with rapid growth. The city was meeting or exceeding our growth rates on a regular basis as set by the county based on the 2035 planning horizon. However, the challenges of the transportation infrastructure was not fully being equipped to handle it all in such a short period of time. The city continues to address growth and deficiencies by managing and following level of service standards as adopted. Many agencies, including Sammamish, have an LOS for intersections. However, intersections alone may not address what the community is experiencing in the segments and corridors. With the accelerated rate of growth and slower pace of citywide transportation infrastructure, the city has struggled to keep up with the transportation needs. Thus, in 2018, the city adopted interim LOS standards to begin to address the continued challenges of growth and transportation improvements, occurred under ordinance 02.018-477. In May 2019, the city adopted V-Over-C standards, and those were shown in Title 14A of the code. In July 2013, the city received a petition for review. In April, the Growth Management Hearing Board filed a final order, final decision in order invalidating the V-Over-C ordinance, and stating that it was a regulation that was inconsistent with the comp plan and did not have proper environmental review. Thus, in May 2020, the city hired BERT consultants to prepare an environmental impact statement on the narrow focus of V-Over-C as it relates to corridors and segments, and potential impacts of this new LOS standard. In August of 2021, the city was found to be in compliance with GMA, according to the Growth Management Hearing Board. On August 26, the city council issued a draft, the city, excuse me, issued a draft EIS with the narrowly-focused topic of V-Over-C and the related potential environmental impacts of the new regulation. On September 14, staff and consultants provided a recorded summary overview of the draft EIS. On September 27, the public comment period was closed. And so with that, the next set of slides will be presented by David Pyle, and again, he'll be talking on some of the boundaries and guardrails related to EIS. David?
Good evening again, council. The purpose of an EIS is to provide information to decision-makers to assist in their decision-making, it's not to make the decision for them. That's really important. An EIS is scoped to include the range of alternative courses of action that encompass those to be considered by the decision-makers under the proposal or action. That's straight out of the Washington Administrative Code. An EIS does not define the proposal or action on behalf of the decision-makers, rather it is intended to study the range of impacts that could result from the action or reasonable or proximate alternatives to the proposal or action that is under consideration by the decision-makers. A few relevant citations from the state laws that govern the EIS process are WAC 19711060, or, excuse me, WAC 19711060, which covers the content of environmental review, WAC 19711400, which covers the purpose of an EIS, WAC 19711402, which covers general requirements of an EIS, WAC 19711442, which covers the content of an EIS for non-project proposals, which this is, and WAC 19711560, which covers how public comment is to be addressed. In the case of Bluma, the proposal or action has been set by the city council through past action and stated intent on the part of a majority of the council to continue to pursue the same or similar action. If the city council chose to change the proposal or take a substantively different action, amending the scope would be appropriate. In this case, the proposal or action is the potential addition of a segment and corridor volume to capacity level of service, or V-Over-C LOS standard, to the city's comprehensive plan and corresponding development regulations. While there are other important issues the city is facing, such as housing diversity and affordability, the city council does not have a proposal or action under consideration to address those issues at this time. For this reason, the proposal or action that is under consideration and under which an EIS is being developed does not include, for example, an alternative that pivots off of a V-Over-C LOS standard and is instead primarily focused on an increase in housing production. The council has the ability to change the proposal or action to be more directly focused on an increase in housing production. However, staff have not been given that direction to date from a majority of the council, leaving the EIS process to study the proposal or action of a potential addition of a segment and corridor volume to capacity level of service standard to the city's comprehensive plan and corresponding development regulations. It is possible that the council, as decision-makers, could decide to modify the proposal or action, which change in direction could result in an EIS addendum or supplemental EIS, or in an extreme case, with a significant change in the proposal or action, could result in a requirement that a new EIS is developed to address a wholly different proposal. These potential options are addressed in WAC 19711620 and 19711625, which covers addendums and supplemental EISs. I hope this explains how the EIS is scoped, and why the DEIS does not include alternatives that address a different proposal or action that, of which is currently proposed to the council. To be very clear, the proposal or action contemplated by the city council, who are the decision-makers, is the addition of a segment and corridor volume to capacity level of service, or V-Over-C LOS standard, to the city's comprehensive plan and corresponding development regulations. While several comments were received regarding the scope and regarding the DEIS requesting that other alternatives should be analyzed, the alternative suggested, such as an increase in housing production to boost affordable and diverse housing choices in the city, is not a reasonably proximate alternative to the proposal or action under consideration, and therefore are not included as standalone alternatives. However, in closing, it is important to point out that the DEIS does include analysis on impacts to housing production, and comments received are being addressed in relevant sections with specific focus on existing comprehensive plan policies and growth targets. Finally, as part of the FEIS, all comments received during the comment period will be addressed, as that is part of the EIS process in accordance with state law. WAC 19711560 provides that public comment does need to be addressed in full, or, excuse me, does need to be addressed in full at the point of issuance of an FEIS. However, public comment does not need to be addressed in full until such a time as an FEIS is issued. Next slide, please. With all that in mind, following council selection of a schedule option, we will discuss details of EIS alternatives and summarize public comments at the October 28 workshop. There also will be a comprehensive review and update on topics such as housing, critical areas, impacts, capital facilities, or, excuse me, what I meant to say is, is that comprehensive review and update on topics such as housing, critical areas, impacts, capital facilities, et cetera, are items that are more appropriately discussed during the 2024 periodic comprehensive plan update. We do have that on our horizon, we know there are many issues the city is facing, and we are very hopeful that the city is able to take these issues on in upcoming years. However, unless the council, as the decision-makers, choose to change the proposal or change the action that is under review with this EIS, these items will not be included as alternatives in the EIS. Thank you.
All right, Lindsay?
Thank you. So again, Council Lindsay Osborn with DCD. The Bluma project team.
Really quickly, Lindsay, Madam Mayor, I think we're going to move, need a motion to extend before Lindsay gets into her.
Probably good timing, it's a couple minutes before 10. So looking for a motion to extend?
Motion to extend to 10:30.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor of extending to 10:30, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have. Okay, we have, we have one nay, and so we are six to one. Okay.
There you go, Lindsey. I didn't want to interrupt you mid-sentence.
No, thank you, Pam.
No problem. Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. So as I was saying, the Bluma project team worked and put together a memorandum regarding various options to move forward with the process of going from the draft environmental impact statement to the final environmental impact statement at the conclusion of the public comment period. That memorandum was finalized on October 6th and was submitted to the city manager, who then provided it to the council that afternoon. These next options that will be moving forward through were explained in more detail in that memorandum and are in the same order as they were in the memorandum as well. Next slide, please. So option number one is selection of a preferred alternative without public hearing. So as Director Pyle had mentioned earlier, or excuse me, Director Elix had mentioned earlier, it is not required that council select a preferred alternative. However, it is highly recommended and kind of the industry standard, if you will, that preferred alternatives are chosen to move forward with the final environmental impact statement decision. But option number one nonetheless is selection of a preferred alternative without conducting a public hearing. So staff has worked with the consultant team, staff schedules, council schedules as far as agenda through the end of the year agendas and other committees meetings, and is proposing a special meeting for the workshop to be held October 28th, a presentation to council as another special meeting on November 17th, and then a resolution approval during a regular council meeting on December 14th, giving staff direction to move forward and how to move forward with the final EIS production. Next slide, please. Option two also includes selection of a preferred alternative, but this adds in the public hearing with our citizens as a number of citizens had requested in their comments during the comment period. So the workshop would still be proposed for October 28th in the evening. A public hearing and presentation would be combined at another special meeting on November 17th, and then again, resolution approval at a regular council meeting on December 14th. Next slide, please. So with option three, if council chose to select, to move forward with selecting a preferred alternative with a public hearing, but felt that another timing would be more appropriate than the dates provided by staff this evening, the project team would need to come back with a new proposed schedule in regards to this option. Option number four, next slide, please. This one does not include council selection of a preferred alternative or a public hearing. We would still have a public, or a workshop, special meeting on October 28th, and then the resolution approval giving direction to staff moving forward would be at the November 16th regular meeting. Next slide, please. Option five would be no selection of a preferred alternative, but include a public hearing. So we would still recommend that workshop moving into a public hearing as a special meeting on the evening of November 17th with that resolution during the regular meeting on December 7th. Doug, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Lindsey. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Miranda, members of the council. My name is Doug McIntyre. I'm the Senior Transportation Planning Manager for Public Works. I'm going to take the presentation across the finish line and basically wanted to take a few moments here to summarize the different types of meetings. I know we've talked about workshops, hearings, presentations and such, but we wanted to give you a little bit more detail on what that means. So the proposed workshop that we have talked about would really be kind of a deeper dive on the EIS, its alternatives, as well as the comments that we received from the public on the, the draft EIS. It would be roughly a three-hour meeting. It would allow us to, again, transfer more information to council members so that there's a really solid understanding of where the EIS is at and where it's going. As you can see in the column on the very far right, we've tried to identify which options that this type of meeting applies to, that, the options that Lindsey mentioned a moment ago. So this workshop is proposed in all five of the options. The second type of meeting we've talked about is the public hearing. So this would be a formal hearing where the public is given, per usual, three minutes to provide comment on the topic at hand. In the memo, we've explained a little bit more detail around how this could be held. This could be a formal hearing that is held at a special or regular meeting. It could be a standalone hearing that is held outside of a typical council meeting where it would just be focused on the hearing. This is an optional means of accepting additional comment on the draft EIS. It is not required by the CECL rules, but it is, it is something that we can choose to do. This would apply to options one, two, three, and five. The third meeting that we've talked about tonight is the council presentation that would kind of wrap up, kind of summarize what we've already done, what we've heard so far, and then focus really more intently on the preferred alternative, if that is one of the options that the council chooses to pursue. So we'd be able to then talk about the pros and cons of the alternatives and then get closer to the selection of a preferred alternative. And this would apply to options one, two, and three, as previously mentioned. The final step in this series of meetings would be the approval of a resolution. We think this is an important step for council, council to take, particularly as the makeup of council on January 1st of 2022 will be different. So this would be a way to sort of put a mile marker down and say, this is the direction that we are proceeding on for the EIS. And that resolution could include the preferred alternative. It could also state that the council is choosing not to select a preferred alternative. So those would be the four types of meetings that we would potentially be having with council, either through the end of this year or potentially leading into 2022, depending, again, on what is, what direction we are provided tonight. So with that, I will turn it over for question, answer, and hopefully seek, or receive some direction tonight.
Mayor, back to you.
Okay, so here's where we hit the scheduling conflicts. Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, I just wanted to ask a question. David, you, you said something about boosting housing production. In the comments I read, I didn't hear anybody asking for us to produce more housing. They were asking us to look at, at altering the types of housing. So I was just curious where you got the notion that anyone was asking us to do more housing or boost, your, your exact words were to boost housing production, because I didn't see a single comment that asked for that.
Yeah, there have been comments received regarding the difference in numbers and housing units between what the Office of Financial Management forecast, or excuse me, local area estimates are for housing production versus other numbers that, that people are speculating on and that the difference in units. So there have been comments made that, that the city is, is purposely choosing a smaller number as a growth target and that the bigger number should be used to actually allow for the right number of housing units to be built in the city. So that is akin to boosting housing production in the city. It's a difference in, in number settings. I understand there are different ways to look at growth. The reason why we use the number that we use is because that is the number that was generated by King County as part of the urban growth capacity study and as part of the review of achievement in housing unit production. Part of the urban growth capacity study Phase III guidance specifically calls out that King County selected that they would use the Office of Financial Management number as the benchmark for cities as, with regards to achievement in housing units.
Okay. Well, just to stay focused on the Bluma, right, that I, I think, at least from the comments I read, people just wanted to make sure that we were looking at, at least as I interpreted it, and, and I'll, I'll make this statement and then I'll, or I'll kind of say this, that I, I think what it leads me to is we need some sort of a, of a workshop where we can, if we could go back to the previous slide, if you wouldn't mind, because I want to use Doug's words. I liked his words. Oh, I don't know if Doug came up with these. Doug read this. Right? I think we need to see the summary of the public comments. We need to dive in depth and look at a comparison of the alternatives and discuss the objectives, strengths, and weaknesses of the alternatives before we select an alternative. And we got a lot of comments where we had 40 residents who asked for more discussion, right? They wanted to understand the implications of, you know, why certain options were selected and why other options were left out, and, and they want to know what the implications are of each of these alternatives. And I think that's a very reasonable request. Quite honestly, I would like that as well. This was a huge document. It was a lot to read, a lot to consume, and, you know, as a council, we spent over three hours debating whether we were going to contribute $10,000 to a farmer's market. I feel like this is far more important than that because the implications to the, to the city and to all of the residents could be huge. And I, I think it warrants further discussion. And I think before we make any decisions and we narrow in on any kind of a, an alter, a preferred alternative, we should, we should discuss it more. As Jeff, you know, stated, we had one pre-recorded, fairly high-level presentation given on this, and that's it. You know, the, the council has said that they haven't had any, you know, participation in this up until now, and I just think that the, the implications, the residents need to know, right, that, that the implications of this could be huge, right? What services or businesses we can attract and retain or not? If there will be sustainable revenue streams, or will there be a never-ending stream of new types of taxes and rate hikes simply to sustain cost of living increases for our current staff, right? Forget new parks or fields or roads or infrastructure of any type.
Okay, so that's, that, that's pretty.
No, I'm sorry, I have the floor, Mayor, and unless, feel like I'm not talking about the topic, which I am, right? The implications of the alternative that we choose will have impacts on our potential revenue streams, and it will have impacts on people's taxes, and it will have impacts on whether or not we can build out infrastructure, whether or not we can have new services or activities or programs or parks or anything like that. And I think we need to understand all of those impacts. So I, I am very much in favor of having a workshop before any decisions are made, and I think ignoring the request of 40 residents to say, we want to know more, we want to understand more, I think that would be wrong. And I think that, you know, it is our job to listen to residents and to ignore them would be, would be terrible. I don't know how we would select an alternative. I don't know what that would be based on without having that, that type of a discussion. And I'm just not sure what we're afraid of by, by being able to have such a discussion like that. What is it that we, what, what is it that we're rushing towards? This was a huge effort by staff. It took a very significant amount of time, and for us to have no discussion on it and to pick an alternative, I just, I just don't think that that's, that that's correct. And I have a lot of questions that went unanswered, and I would love to see what the responses are to many of the comments that we got from the public. I think, was it 60 or 65 comments that we received from the public in total? I would love to see what the responses to those comments are, and again, allowing the public to have that kind of input on which way we go, I think is really, really important.
Okay, so Councilmember, are you pushing, you're pushing for this, correct?
I'm pushing to say we should have a workshop before any decisions are made. I do have some questions. Would now be the appropriate time to ask some of the questions about, or are we just selecting a timeline?
No.
Our focus is on the timeline.
Yes. Just on the timeline. Okay. I think that's it. I did have one question, though, for David. You made a comment that said that the, the council majority dictated the direction of, of this and the alternatives that were selected. Can you elaborate more on that comment for me?
Yeah, so what I said was the council majority dictated what the proposal or action is, and from that, the scoping process identifies what the alternatives would be, and the alternatives should be reasonably approximate to what the proposal or action is.
So if I understand that, the, you're saying the proposal from the majority was this V over C for corridors?
Yes.
But the alternatives that were selected, so even when, when the drafting alternatives was put out, we got public comment, quite a bit of public comment even then, and people felt like there were other alternatives that could be considered. For example, there was no consideration of alternatives with more transit options, for example. So transit was not part of any of the calculus in here that said, well, what if we focused on transit, what would that look like? That was, those were comments that were received during the scoping period as well as on this one. So that's why I want to understand what role does the council play in, in that part of it, or, because I don't feel like we did, like, I don't feel like we, at least not publicly, we didn't have a say in what alternatives were selected.
So the, the decision maker typically does not have say in an EIS process. It's an administrative function where alternatives are identified. If the decision makers wanted to change what the proposal or action was to add a transit component to it, then that would probably widen the, the range of alternatives to include those types of alternatives that were suggested by members of the community who are interested in seeing transit options included.
So help me understand, because V over C is a measure of, right, the volume to capacity of traffic, so how is transit not part of that calculus? Wouldn't transit always be part of any kind of transportation calculus?
It, it could be. It could also be a mitigation measure. But because the, this, the very narrow, specific proposal that was on the table by, by a majority of the council was to add the V over C to the city's comprehensive plan and to the code, that did not specifically include a transit option.
That's interesting, because I just, okay, fair enough. Well, so my, my request would be that we have a workshop before any decisions are made and, and that we do, if we can, that we have a public hearing since 40 people requested that. And I think anytime 40 residents ask for something, we should listen, right? We don't often get that much response from the public, and I think that, that that would be really a, a great way to go. I don't think we should hurry this along. I think we should make sure that we have the appropriate discussion and the appropriate in-depth discussion before we make any decisions because the implications of this are so large. So that would be my request. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart, if I could add one thing to this, I would draw your attention to WAC 19711560. Item one specifically identifies that addressing public comment is a component of an FEIS. Typically, it's not done prior to issuance of an FEIS in full, although the staff and those working on the EIS might offer some, some responses to comments. Comprehensive review and response to comment is something that is done as part of the final environmental impact statement. And with comment, the, the, those responsible for drafting the EIS could identify that there needs to be an adjustment made to the range of alternatives. So if there are comments made regarding transit, that is something that could be considered and evaluated through the FEIS, and there could be other, other information offered at that point in issuance of that FEIS document. Just want to make sure you're aware of that. WAC 19711560. Thank you.
So, so what you're saying is that the council should make a decision on which alternative without considering the public input from the comment period?
The public input from the comment period is in there. It's, it's, I believe it's been distributed to the council for the council to read in full. However, staff responses to each of the public comments is not something that is done in an EIS typically until the final issuance of the FEIS.
That seems weird, doesn't it? That we wouldn't understand what the staff response was to the public comment before we pick a preferred alternative? Because that kind of feels like we're not actually listening to the public input. Does it say it's not to, to be done or doesn't have to be done until the final?
It says it shall be done at the final.
Okay, so that just means that by the time you issue the final, it should be done. It doesn't mean you have to wait until the final, correct?
You can read it that way.
Thanks.
Okay, next, Councilmember Odell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This whole process has had a gestation period. It's gone on way too long, in my opinion, and I don't really feel it's fair to kick the can down the road to have a future And I don't really feel it's fair to kick the can down the road to have a future council decide this. If we do that, it'll be a long time before we come to any kind of resolution here. I appreciate David's comments about, David Powell's comments about the com plan being the place to address some of the issues. And I agree with that. While I do have a lot of sympathy for dealing with the problems that are concerning people. Having said that, though, I am going to move the adoption of option two as a council choice.
Could you bring that up, Doug? Just so that...
Can I ask a clarifying question?
I don't hear a second. There's a motion on the floor.
I wanted to ask a clarifying question of the motion.
Thank you, Pam.
May I, Madam Mayor?
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
There is no second.
Second.
Oh. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Discussion and Councilmember Stewart, you had a clarifying question.
Yeah, so does this mean we'll have the workshop prior to selecting our preferred alternative? Is that what this means, Councilmember Odell? So we'll have the meeting on the 28th?
That is my view of it, the way it's written.
Okay, great. That's what I just want to make sure, is that we get to have the in-depth discussion before we pick an option.
I think we need in-depth discussion to help that along. I would like to ask staff to do a summary of the comments that have been received to date and try to group them by what they're saying, by category. That will help us understand what we're dealing with here. But the point is that we have to get this buggy rolling down the road a little bit here.
Okay.
We have to pass this thing in order to pass something, whether it's whatever we're talking about here or not. But I do believe that the V over C for segment is a major omission from the current methodology because we are not belvedere with a really well-established grid system. We have corridors here which have half a mile with no stoplight. Think Sahaly Way. Think Parkway. Think 244th. So we do need to crack that in because it is a major part of the congestion issue. Yes, things have changed since COVID. It doesn't mean they won't change back again at some point in the future. And we are dealing with a roadway system here, which we will have to have functional for the next 25-plus years. We can go back through the com plan and address some of the other issues that have been raised. I would hesitate to put a major alliance on transit. If we get additional transit, fine. But I have to tell you, for several years, Kathy Huckabee and I broke our spears as members of RTC on trying to get additional transit to some manage. All I can say is thank God for Microsoft and Google, who are providing the additional stuff for us. But we needed to get going on this and get to work on the transportation master plan again, from which we can establish a TIP which we can afford and can implement. And we need to do so in a way that restores the momentum to this place that has been lacking for the last couple of years. So that's my reason for suggesting that we do, I suggest it. I yield the floor.
Okay. Oh, and I'm next in line. So myself and, as being one person, and I've already alerted staff, I am not able to be here on the 28th. So if there's anybody else who cannot be here on the 28th, I have been told that we'll be able to have a meeting and be filled in so that we are ready to go for the hearing on the 14th. So if any of those hands are there to let us know that you cannot be here on the 28th, they will let us have a special meeting put aside to update us before the 14th.
Karen, can I make one more point?
Yes.
And there is, I don't feel we can go through this exercise without having a public hearing. We absolutely need to have it, in my opinion. As far as the November 17th meeting goes, that is two weeks after my wife's new replacement, and I'd be running down to change ice packs. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we, so, I didn't hear your first part about the 28th?
The 28th is fine for me, November 17th.
Okay.
Could be the problem because my wife has surgery on the 17th.
Okay, so...
But I will endeavor to make it somehow.
Okay. If there's anybody else who has a problem on the 28th, they can let us know. And then I'll yield then to Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, I had a question, but it was prior to the motion main, so...
So we have any questions right now? We are in, we've got a motion on the floor. If these are questions to the motion on the floor. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Yeah, this is the option that I was leaning toward. Anyway, I do think that the workshop is critical. And so I will avail myself to the 28th. If, for whatever reason, we, I mean, it doesn't sound like we won't have a quorum. I mean, Karen, of course, we would want you to be present for the workshop. But I assume that it could be taped, as our regular council meetings are. That way, it's available for review. I just think it's critical to have a deep dive on this and understand what the implications of any one of the preferred alternatives are. And that also gives the public an opportunity to hear where we land, to further enable them to make public comment to us during the hearing. But Karen, you mentioned something about a November 14th. I don't know if you meant the 17th or if you were talking about a different date, so I wasn't quite tracking on what you, on what timeline you were thinking about.
No, it must have been the 17th.
Okay. So your thought was to have it all on the 17th?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. I understand, since you're not in town, but I would not support that because I think it is imperative to have a workshop and digest this and then give it an opportunity to sink in and consider. I can't, frankly, I wouldn't be able to digest an entire workshop, land on a preferred alternative in order to inform the public where we landed so that they could give comment all on the same day.
Okay. Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah, I would agree with the motion on the floor for option number two.
Councilmember Ross? Do you have a question regarding the motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'm also good with option two. The question on the workshop and all these sessions is, it appeared to me many of the comments were focused on actions, and we're not going to change actions. Is there a way in front of all these meetings to help articulate what's in scope and what's out of scope? To help guide the conversation? Because we may be having a lot of dialogue that is not pertinent to the decision at hand.
Hopefully through the summarization of the comments that it leads us in that direction.
Okay.
And then we'll present that to the council and then dialogue about that.
Very good, thank you.
And did everybody get a chance to speak before we go to another round? Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, this is my first one on the motion. My questions are around the dates. I'm just curious why the 28th as opposed to the 26th, which would be the Tuesday? And why the 17th, which is a Wednesday, as opposed to the 16th, which is a Tuesday?
Doug, you want to take a stab at that? We've spent a lot of time on that.
Yeah, yeah, I can take a stab. So, great question, Councilmember Stewart. It's been tricky trying to find dates that work. There's a variety of factors that we have to consider. One of the factors is the relatively full council agendas that are going through the end of the year. So it's a packed rest of the year for the council. So we're trying to find, because these are deep dive topic areas, we want to have sort of the undivided attention. So that's one reason for having them separate from the regular council meetings in some cases on these proposals or proposed meetings. The other thing we're continuing with is holidays, staff and consultant availability. And then we actually worked backwards from the end of the year. So we assumed that December 14th would be the best kind of last date to plan for. So we worked backwards, factored in all of those things, holidays, vacations, availability, in addition to just doing the work to prepare an agenda packet.
Plus noticing.
And noticing, correct. Yes, thanks, Jeff. And so we landed on these dates. It's a really tight, we're trying to thread the needle. So that's why one of the policy questions that we had on one of the slides was, does the council want to finish this meeting series in 2021? Because there's not a whole lot of flexibility in there. And these are the dates that are pretty much the one and only for these different types of meetings.
So we couldn't do it next Tuesday?
We need to extend. We should probably vote on this first.
Yep, we have a motion on the floor, so we'll have to finish this first.
Yeah, I'm just curious why we couldn't do it next Tuesday instead of next Thursday?
Availability of the consultant was part of the issue. And I don't know if they were available next Tuesday, if I recall correctly.
We're also still processing all of the comments. We're still summarizing, categorizing them. We're still doing a lot of work in the background.
Okay, and then the November 17th instead of the 16th, is that a noticing timing issue? Because I just feel like anytime we move the meetings off a Tuesday, we're less likely to get as many people participating because our meetings are almost always on Tuesdays, you know?
Yeah, yeah, that was definitely something we looked into. We're, one of the big reasons for that was, just again, the really crowded council agendas going through the end of the year. We want to have a really good discussion with council members. And we're not sure that we can take, you know, several hours out of a regular meeting. So that definitely played into it. That was a big factor. But again, all the other factors were part of it, too. Holidays and availability and noticing and production.
So we would have a meeting on November 16th and a meeting on November 17th? Is that what this proposal is? I'm sorry. That was directed to staff.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second, and then we have to extend. So, motion on the floor, second, and we've had discussion. Is there any more discussion? Okay, seeing none, the motion on the floor is to accept option number two, which is the workshop on the 28th, followed by the public hearing and presentation on the 17th, and then the resolution approval on the 14th of December. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move we extend to 11 o'clock.
You know, we've got two big things left, so can I make a friendly amendment and just say 11:30 so we don't have to bring somebody back in a half an hour?
Okay, please do.
Okay, so can, how about 11:30?
I will second that.
Okay, we have a mo...
I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to extend to 11:30. Do we hear, and I'll second it, and I'll second. Although, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Six one.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the last item. We appreciate your attention and support to this detail. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just one comment on some of the discussion we just had. These meetings should all be taped and made widely available through the normal process. We can also use the city communications department to make sure that this gets as widely distributed within the city as possible.
Okay, I believe they are, but I'll bake it up. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so the next discussion is Mr. Sugg, and it is our legislative priorities.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Council and Mr. City Manager. My name is Mike Sugg. I am your senior management analyst. And tonight, I am joined by Nick Federici, our contracted state lobbyist. And tonight, Nick and I are here to continue the discussion from last week on legislative priorities for the upcoming legislative session, which is scheduled to begin in about three months on January 10th. There are a couple exhibits in your packet this evening. Exhibit one is a revised list of potential legislative priority ideas for the council to consider. And this list was narrowed based on council's feedback last week. And then the second exhibit is a memo from our lobbyists summarizing the upcoming session and topics of potential interest. I will start by turning it over to Nick for a brief overview of expectations for the 2022 session, and then we can run through those priorities. Nick, are you ready to start us off?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mike, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having me tonight at this late hour. I'll try to be concise and answer your questions as directly as possible. As Mr. Sugg indicated, along with Luke Esser, I'm part of the team that represents all of you and your constituents down in Olympia for the last several years. Luke was unable to attend tonight, so I may not be able to cover all the pieces, but we'll get back to you with any answers that you need. As usual, Mr. Sugg has done his exceptional job of putting together these memos for you. In our overview memo, I'll just run over a couple of items. Number one, this year is a short session running from January 10th of 2022 until May 8th, I'm sorry, March 8th, which I should remember because that's my mom's birthday. It's a supplemental session, which means they're unlikely to take on major new budget or policy efforts if they follow more normal type, other than the possibility of a major transportation package, which is still being negotiated and discussed very actively and could bring, you know, hundreds of millions or even billions of dollars in for major transportation projects across the state. Other than that, they have only $84 million for a small supplemental capital budget, are focused on sort of clarification and cleanup of a number of major policy items that they did last year, particularly the suite of police reform legislation. And thanks to both the robustness of Washington's economy and federal funds, the state has its highest-ever surplus of $5.5 billion in its operating budget. So though they generally don't do major budgeting items in these quote-unquote "off-years," they have the funds with which to do that, including the possibility of transferring some of those major operating funds into the transportation or capital buckets in order to do more investments in those areas. That's the major pieces that I think we're looking at this legislative session. Last year, the Washington State Legislature, or earlier this year in 2021, was the only legislature in the country that was entirely virtual. No public allowed on the grounds of the Capitol at all. And even most of the staff and a vast majority of legislators not personally in attendance. That made our advocacy a little more difficult and a little more intensive because of having our usual methods of one-on-one advocacy constrained. It sounds like they may follow a similar mechanism this year, to have some sort of a quote-unquote "hybrid" approach, where the public largely not able to access the Capitol grounds, but that most or all of the legislators are likely to be there in person. They're still making final decisions about that based on the latest trends in the COVID data. But that's the current discussion that they're having. And again, lots of the conversations around transportation package with major new revenues, either from their existing funds or from the potential of new gas tax or other types of revenues that they could put in place. So that's sort of a quick overview of the memo that Luke and I prepared at Mr. Sugg's request. And I think Mr. Sugg is going to walk through the... And I think Mr. Sugg is going to walk through the priorities that you've identified as draft priorities at this point.
Great, thank you, Nick. And as Nick mentioned, I will now go ahead and pull up our first exhibit and the agenda materials for tonight.
Looks like Councilmember Odell has a question.
We have a couple hands here, so I will pause and let the mayor take over.
Yeah, thank you. Just really quickly, do we still have a legislative committee?
We don't have any committees, Tom.
I know. Maybe we should. Just suggesting for the next council.
Councilmember Trane?
No, I, I have my hand up for the first comment after they do the presentation.
Oh, okay.
Alrighty, so looking at exhibit one, which is a revised list of potential priorities based on the council's feedback last week. This will look very familiar, but with some revisions. At the top of the page here, we have our roads bucket. And right now, we have a lot in this category. To start off at a high level, the main messaging is that we support the passage of a new transportation package during the upcoming session because the success of the city's transportation funding requests depends greatly on the passage of this new package. So we do feel it's important to include some language to this effect at the top of this item here. And then we have what we've informally titled regional priorities. And based on the council's feedback from last Tuesday, we pulled forward the two SR202 projects from last year's list into this list for discussion purposes. And then finally, we have a category called, quote, subregional priorities, which include the three projects that will be sent to Senator Mullet in response to his request for the city's transportation priorities. And you'll recall having that prioritization discussion with staff from Public Works last week. And under the consent agenda tonight, these three projects were approved as the city's response to the senator. So as you can see, there are quite a few potential projects that we have listed under the roads bucket. And Luke and Nick have advised that we may want to narrow this list down further in order to increase our likelihood of success. Our legislators, as we know, get hit with a lot of requests from many different organizations and have very limited time to spend with each stakeholder. So it can help to be specific with the city's request. And Nick can speak to this approach further if there are any questions. So this is really one area where we're looking for some council feedback. In the stormwater bucket, we heard interest from multiple council members last week for including the Pine Lake Creek Basin Plan as a priority. So that's what we're showing here. Looking at transit, we have a priority that's been on the city's list for a few years now that seeks to implement a policy change to allow employer shuttles to use park and ride lots. And last week, there appeared to be general support from among the council for including this priority again. And as the note under this item mentions, former Senator Guy Palumbo was the previous sponsor of these legislative efforts, but he retired from the legislator, legislature a couple of years ago. So to be successful on this item, we will need to identify and work with a new legislator to champion this policy change. And again, Nick can speak to this more if there are any questions on the logistics of making progress on this item. And finally, in the other bucket, we brought back a few items that council mentioned last week, including asking for restoration of funding to the Public Works Trust Fund, supporting local government transportation funding sources that Sammamish has used for many years, and supporting the priorities of organizations that we've supported in the past. And likely, these wouldn't be our main priorities, but could be included on the back of our one-page graphic as we've done in the past. So just again, to reiterate, exhibit one is not an exhaustive or final list. We're still looking for the council's feedback tonight. And there may be other items that we want to add or remove. And tonight, we're really looking for two things from the council. The first are the council's agreed upon list of priorities that staff can then format into a final graphic and bring back consent for November 1st. And then the second thing that we're looking for is the council's direction to staff to write a letter from the mayor to Senator Mullet expressing support for a new transportation package. And with that, I will turn it back to the mayor for discussion.
Okay, well, the first one is Councilmember Trane.
I think it's Nick, right? Mike and Nick, good job. So roads, yeah, one and two. And then I take it you've already submitted number three to Mullet, so there you go. There's your reduction. And even if you wanted to take two, just go 2A. Not my first choice, but if you're going to reduce it, there you go. The stormwater on Pine Lake Creek Basin Plan, is that literally the George Da- Does this include then doing, could we put in here something about doing then the culverts at George Davis Creek, or was that kind of assumed that it's in there?
Councilmember Trane, in, in talking with our stormwater staff, they didn't indicate that we needed, or that we were prepared for a further request on George Davis Creek culvert at this time.
Yeah. Those, after we just released those salmon tonight, I see the importance of that. Keep this one then, one. Good. Actually, if there was any other one down in your gray, I think it was called the Funding for Transportation, Public Works Trust Fund. Keep that on there, please. Thanks. Back to you, Mayor.
Okay, next, we have our councilmember Stuart.
Yeah, I'd love to hear from Nick in terms of what he, his recommendations are, or what he was thinking about when he said we should narrow down our, our transportation requests. I'd love to hear that before I provide my input there.
Thanks, Madam, Madam Councilmember. I think just given that it's a short session and that they're likely to not have a lot of bandwidth to do a lot of different things that focus on prioritization are what's most essential. And, you know, sort of as, as Councilmember Trane just, just did. I think that particular, regardless of how we communicate it, that, that we should have some sense of what's more important on this list because everything, if everything's top priority, then nothing is top priority. And, and it, and it, you know, and they don't prioritize it that way. I think if there are items, I mean, obviously, I know that the funding is needed, you know, under the, the road, the roads priority, the funding is needed from a transportation package to be able to make any of this go. I know that it's a bit, that the, the 202 projects have been, have been major priorities for some time. I think it's going to be hard to get more than one of the subregional priorities when Mr. Sugg, Luke and myself were, were talking about sort of ways to, to look at this. One, one way to look at it is that the, both of the 202 projects, I believe, are in the 45th Legislative District. And the Issaquah Pine Lake Road Improvement, Pine Lake, Issaquah Pine Lake Road actually forms the, the district boundary between the 41st and the 5th Legislative District. Given that Senator Mullet is representative of the, of the 5th Legislative District, it might make sense to prioritize that. I don't have a sense, you certainly have greater sense of what, which of those might be a greater substantive priority, but just in terms of sort of game planning, the, the potential reception, that would be my, that, that would be my recommendation is to, is to focus on things in that way and sort of prioritize those. I think it's great to include everything on a list, but to give us sort of a back, back pocket sense, if you will, of, of what rises to the top. The other thing that I would point out is at the end of the memo that Luke and I did for you, bottom of page three and page four, it just enumerates a few of the AWC legislative priorities and quote unquote significant issues, for lack of a better term, tier one and tier two issues for the Association of Washington Cities, passing transportation packages we've put on here, ensure basic infrastructure funding, which, which aligns with the Public Works Trust Fund conversation, and to protect transportation benefit district funding authority as, as I think is down in the item number two under other. So, so that, those are 100% what's on AWC's agenda, and then there's several more items. So I just wanted to draw those to your attention.
I would say we should definitely keep then the regional priorities. I know they are both in the 45th, but they are regional. I think that ups their visibility and likelihood of getting attention at the state level. They're also our two biggest choke points on the north end, right? All of our troubles are really from those two intersections. So I think that's great. I also think there's going to be a lot of focus on 2B because that's going to be near the Marymore Light Rail Station. So I think now is the time to strike on that. If there are going to be improvements, there's a lot of construction and work going on there now. So let's strike while, you know, so to speak, while the patient is open on the table, let's do that. And I would agree that if we have to narrow down the subregional priorities, I would go with 3A. Moving down the list, if you could, Mike. And also, Mike, thank you. You always do a great job with this. We throw a lot at you and you always come up with a great list. My question on the stormwater is, you know, it's nice to be precise, but it's only a $200,000 ask. Is that really kind of the best we can do? It just doesn't seem like a, a big ask. And I guess everything doesn't have to be big, but I feel like, you know, go big or go home. So this is fine if it's the only one we've really got. I guess it's the only one we've got. In terms of transit, I'm still not convinced we want to call them employer shuttles. Is the only thing we're really asking for is the permission for employer shuttles? Or are we asking that we could have any kind of shuttles?
I think, Nick, maybe you can speak to this. I think we could craft the bill or the, the policy however we would like to. I think we were just going off of the past legislation that has been introduced on this topic, which primarily dealt with employer shuttles. But that is certainly something we could look into as part of our work on this priority.
This item under transit is one we really struggled with, to be perfectly honest, the last couple of years when Senator Palumbo from Botha was in the legislature. He was a very strong advocate of this, you know, based on the same sort of troubles that we've had in, in Sammamish that were up in his district. Since he's left the legislature, we've kind of been orphaned a little bit in terms of legislators not taking, not being as keen on this in, in Senator Palumbo's absence. Senator Mullet is, is interested but hasn't chosen to champion it. So it's something that I feel like we need to do some more work cultivating champions on this from the legislative standpoint. And I don't know that it's something that we're going to be able to get done this year just because of the, the, that, you know, lacking somebody to really go to bat for it. So I think we have plenty of opportunity to amend it and be more flexible about it, as, as you indicated, Councilmember Stuart.
Yeah, I'd like to focus it to just lifting the metro monopoly. And I, I think-
I agree.
We can target a couple of folks, like, let's not call it employer shuttles. Let's just call it lifting the metro monopoly. And again, I actually think this year is a, a good year to tackle this in that there's been a lot of, you know, especially sound transit. There's been a lot of changes and cuts. It kind of, I think, gives us an opening to lobby the legislature and say, hey, like, we're not getting certain things. Stop tying our hands. Give us a break. We want to be able to come up with other solutions. Because, you know, if you're not going to be able to provide them, which is, you know, we understand there are challenges, they can get out of our way. And so I, I think that if we craft it, instead of calling it employer shuttles, we just call it lifting the metro monopoly. Or, you know, we can get creative and call it, you know, untying our hands or something, right? Allowing public-private partnership solutions. Like, I think there are a lot of things we can call it that will play well, that will market well. And I, I still think we go for it. And I think I'll try to make some phone calls and see if we can't find someone on both sides of the house, or both, in both houses, that would be, you know, at least an empathetic ear. And Nick, I don't know if you have any ideas, but we can actually talk offline about, I have some ideas of some people who might, who might be willing to help.
Terrific. I'm happy to, you know, if this, if this remains on the list, I'm happy to consult with you and other council members and staff about who may be able to take up the mantle on this.
I mean, I think from a Sammamish perspective, that the concept that we're going to have a light rail stop just a couple miles down the road, you know, having the ability to have shuttles running from various points is absolutely the right answer from a traffic perspective and from an environmental perspective. And we don't necessarily need ginormous buses. We maybe need small things that run frequently, right? So I think this is an answer on a number of levels, so I like it. And I'm good with everything else. Thanks.
Councilmember Odell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One nice thing about Sammamish is we do cross three different districts, which means we have three senators and six representatives we can play with in the listed legislature. On the north end, we have Manca Denga and Larry Springer, who are both well up in the legislature. On the south end, we have Bill Ramos and Senator Mullet, who was also, also mentioned. Bill is, I think, the number two in the House on Transportation. And in the 41st, we have some people there we can work with as well. I actually know most of them from past days, so I'd be willing to help on that. So I'm going to go through this thing. I agree, we have to support the passage of the transportation package. Otherwise, we may not get anything. So that is number one. Regional priorities, I like it both. The one thing I would question is whether we've, but are we taking the ground on a roundabout? I'm not sure the roundabout's the right idea for that location. It may be, but I remain to be convinced, I can see people from points east of here, Carnation and Fall City, may be losing out when Sammamish blows out the roundabout coming down Solway in the morning. So we need to have a discussion about that. And I totally agree that the time to strike on both 2A and 2B is now because of light rail opening up. On subregional priorities, I think we need to stay with all three of these because they do touch all three districts. And I think if we were to pull them out, for instance, 228th is, is everybody. Solway Improvement is Benga and Larry Springer. And Issaquah Pine Lake Road are, are the 5th and the 41st. So we've, we've got the waterfront covered here. The one questionable thing may be the stormwater, but as Pam pointed out, this is a study, basically, relatively small money. And I'd be in favor of leaving it in because Pine Lake Creek is a potential salmon spawning stream. And we probably should work with the Coquelin Work Group on developing the potential for that, because there is a plan they're working on for that part of the lake shore. Employer shuttles, enough has been said on that. I think we need to get rid of the monopoly, not only on the, on the parking lots, but also the bus stops. Throw that in as well. Microsoft shuttle cannot use metro bus stops. We need to, we need to open those up. The Public Works Trust Fund, boy, I would love to get that re-instead because that's how we built 228 to begin with. We're just in the process now of paying it off if we haven't already. And local government transportation funding sources, absolutely. For other number three, I guess if I had to leave something off, that would be it. But I don't think it's worth leaving off. I like the list as it is, folks. Thank you.
Okay, if we have to pare down the list, of course, supporting the transportation package. But then I wanted to, the 228th and the 202 roundabout. I'm, would want to think twice about getting to the intersection that goes into Redmond with the Lake Road because having our business down there, I know from looking at that area that they've got two major designs already in mind. that they've got two major designs already in mind and they've been working with the state. So I don't know if I want to get involved with, with getting involved in getting that messed up with what they're working on already. So I do want the metro monopoly lifted, and I think we should just call for that to be lifted, not necessarily calling it any sort of employee shuttle or anything. And the Public Works Trust Fund. And watching the Coconie release tonight, which I thought was just way cool, I do think we need to look at the Pine Lake Creek Basin Plan and see where the culverts are needed and work with the Coconie Work Group and, you know, look down there and possibly come up with, you know, what is needed down there. I know, I saw somebody show me last night where all these Coconie were, they had, right at the mouth of where the stream is, where they were showing all these, these Coconie jumping last night. It was just amazing to see how exciting it was to see that these fish were back. So it's working. And so, you know, we've invested so much, you know, money and time into it, so we're doing something right. Let's just make sure we keep doing it right. Okay. Next up is Councilmember Gambelin, and he could probably tell you more about the Coconie stuff. He was there working on it.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So it seems we're doing what you kind of asked us not to do, which is saying we basically want everything. Everybody's kind of said, gone down the list and pretty much said, let's ask for everything. So my question is, what happens when we ask for everything?
Well, that's an excellent question. I think that, I think it's a matter of finding a fit for somebody who, as a legislator, who is willing to step up to the plate and identify what they want to do. I think that one of the risks we run of not prioritizing it ourselves is that they prioritize it for us. And so that legislator X says, well, of all these items, here's the one thing that, that I want to do, and maybe it's the smallest or, or, or the least significant from, from council's standpoint. But I think that's the, that's the major risk we run is, is just not being able to sort of put more weight on one point or on a couple of points. And instead, by having that more diffuse than, you know, if we have one thing and we, or two things and say, this is really what we want, then that sends a stronger message, I think, in some ways to legislators to do those things. And increases the chance of those individual items being carried forward. You know, it's not fatal by any stretch of the imagination to have an ambitious or broader agenda. I think that it just means that some of that is left to chance, unfortunately, as to what legislators want to adopt, which, which priorities. And, yeah, that's the downside, I guess.
So maybe we could ask council members to actually go and put three things down and say, these are the three that I want. Because again, I've been sitting here listening and basically everybody has said they want everything. They've gone down the list and they said, I'll basically take everything. Maybe Councilmember Trinh was a little more discretionary. So is there a possibility of getting something out to council members and say, you can only pick three, or you can only pick four, and put those three or four in an order? Because to just say, we want it all and go after all of it, to me, is kind of just saying, we're going to let somebody else decide what they're going to give us because we're not really not giving the priority. And we're, you know, we've had council members already say, well, let's ask for things that have already been said no several times and that there doesn't look like a chance that we have anybody, for example, the vans, the company vans, it's already been denied a couple of times and we don't have anybody even to go and ask for it. So again, if you ask for everything, then you have no control on what you get. So I would like to propose that the staff sends out a, some type of survey to the council members that says, you can only pick three and put them in priority of what you'd like. And then we can at least get something to our, our people that's going to ask for this, that that's not just, please ask for everything. So that's what I'd like to propose.
I'd say four, but I would second that. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Very similar ideas. I think, I was on the council, I know Councilmember Odell was on the council, and we used to have large laundry lists of projects that we would take to our legislators and we would not get a whole lot in return. I think it's when we narrowed the list and came up with the SAM for Samamish acronym that I think Mike was so crafty with, that we started having success. So I don't think we should go with the spaghetti on a wall and throw and see what sticks approach. I think we really need to narrow this down. My first suggestion would be to remove number one, which is support passage of transportation package, because that's pretty obvious when we're asking for transportation packages here in priority, in our priority. So I would get rid of that for one. And then if I had to pick one of these projects here, I might put two on just because we've broken them down, but I wouldn't label them regional and subregional. I would just put them. I think it's, you can put it in the subtext there that at the SR2, SR202 Sahali Intersection Roundabout would be the one that I would grab out of there. And we can state in smaller text if we want to that that is a regional project that will facilitate more than just the city of Samamish. And then, while I, I want to do something for Issaquapine Lake Road, not picking it here for a priority doesn't mean that we're not going to do it. It just means we're not asking the state for help for it. And so I'm, I'm looking at the two, the Sahali and the 228 one. And I'll be honest with you, I have a hard time picking between the two. They both need help. And then transit, I 100% agree with Councilmember Stewart, let's not call it employer shuttles the whole time. We have been asking for them to remove the metro monopoly. And I think we continue to hammer with that from a marketing perspective, changing up what you're saying is like, we're starting all over. Hey, we have a new one here. So continue using that metro monopoly lifted language because we're going to start hammering it into the heads of our legislators, at least the ones that get reelected, that that is really very meaningful to the city of Samamish. So stick with that same language. And then hopefully these other things are going to appear on a flip side of a card rather than on the front side. But I agree that this list definitely needs to be pared down. All projects on here have value. But if we want to actually get money from the state, then we better tell them exactly what we want because they're not going to give us money for all of them. So we better pick a couple. And those would be my suggestions for adding to the list.
Councilmember Odell?
So I'm sitting here looking at the Eastside Transportation Partnership Legislative Priority List. They have three major things and about three or four subbullets within each of them. I agree that perhaps we should pare this down. And I guess the first thing I'd throw would be the stormwater, although I hate to do it. But $200,000 is something that we could think of partially funding ourselves or go for a federal grant for. The, the support of this, I agree, we can take item number one off because I think that's self-evident. And frankly, that could just be a line at the top for what they called, they used the title in Eastside Transportation Partnership, quarters in infrastructure. And perhaps we could combine two and three into one. But I have a question, would Issaquapine Lake Road score high on Issaquas list? Does anyone have a feel for that?
Sorry, don't have the answer for that. Councilmember Odell? I don't know if city manager, no, doesn't look like we have an answer for that.
Okay. So maybe we should think about that one. I like B and C. Could you scroll down a little bit, please? Stormwater, I already talked about. And I would call, I would put transit into other, combine it. So whatever we reworked number one under Transit as, I would think would be behind the Public Works Trust Fund in priority. And I would stop there. Back to you, Karen.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I think we have to narrow the list, but that doesn't mean we have to take it down to bare. I think it's going to be a big transportation package year. I think we can include at least three road projects. I think the 202 and Sahali intersection and the 202 and Eastlake-Samamish intersection, I think those are big winners at the state level. They're multi-jurisdictional. I think they're big winners. And again, I think the 202 and Eastlake-Samamish intersection is going to be a hotspot because it's all about the light rail. And those are, those are great projects to put out there right now this year. I think the Issaquapine Lake Road, all three of those projects in the subregional category, and again, I don't think we need to categorize them like this, but I think all three of those are really important. But Issaquapine Lake Road, there's a huge safety factor there, right? We block the, the fire station with that traffic. And I think that, I think we got to keep that on there. And I think there's a way to sell that too, right? To talk about this isn't just a road improvement project, but it's a, it's a public safety project. That also plays well with the state legislature. So I think that's, that's something we could really work with Nick on to help with that. So the other changes I'm all in on, I would agree, the stormwater project, $200,000, it's probably not worth it. If we're trying to narrow things down, I'd rather keep a million and a half dollar project on there and ask for that as opposed to a $200,000 project. So that would be my take. And just to be clear, I don't think anybody was saying, keep everything. I think all of us pared it down to some degree. It's kind of sounding like, though, we might be having a wholly transportation-focused agenda, right? So it's road projects, it's lifting the metro monopoly, and it's a trust fund. And I think that's a pretty simple message. I think that's something we can simplify down for our lobbyists here to sell it. And I don't know, Mike, how creative you can get if you can still fit it into SAM. If not, that's fine. But I think, I think that's what we're focused on. We're focused on, you know, safely and sustainably moving people. And I think that's a message we can sell. It's about cutting down on, you know, emissions. It's about moving people effectively, and it's about public safety in these projects. And I think that's how we can sell this to the legislature. And the way it works, it's not that these things have been- No, too, just to clarify, at the state legislature level, it often takes two or three or even four shots before something lands. You rarely get something, especially like lifting the metro monopoly, you rarely get something like that launched in a, you know, in a single session. And so you have to have endurance in this game. And so, yes, you keep going back and asking until you get the yes that you want. That's, that's how this works. Thanks.
So I can make my list even shorter, just 2A. Thank you. Don't send me an email, by the way, Mike or Nick. I don't need an email. You got my position. So have a great time out there talking to legislators. I think I'll make a few phone calls on behalf of the city to my legislators and senators. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. I just want to be sure I heard Councilmember Stewart right, that she wanted to have the Public Works Trust Fund on our legislative priorities as one of the, like, overarching ones. Is that what I heard? Or did I mishear you?
I'm saying I can stay on the list. I'm fine with it being on the backside. I'm fine with it being a flip side.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Okay. I just, I thought you meant on the front side. And I was like, I'm pretty sure that AWC and SCA always have that one on there. So it's not like we need to be continuing to hound on things that other larger organizations are.
Agreed. Totally.
And I think that's how we say it, is that we support the legislative priorities of AWC and SCA. Of course, we haven't seen those yet, so we might want to wait and see. Maybe we won't support them, I don't know. But-
Most likely, we will support them.
Most likely, we will support them, yes.
Madam Mayor, I don't know what the proper protocol is for me to, I don't want to interject in there, in the conversation, but if I have the opportunity to respond to a couple of the comments, I'd love to do so.
Absolutely. Yeah, I wanted to, can I, I just wanted to make one quick comment, and that was on the, Nick is on the 202 at Eastlake-Samamish Parkway, is before we add that to our list, I want to make sure that what we're doing is supporting whatever Redmond is doing, not trying to get money ourselves because I don't know why we would do that. So I would rather support what they're doing than for us to be trying to do something different. And then I'm going to yield the floor to you.
I think that the way that you are talking about this makes a lot of sense. I think that it's possible and cleaves well, if you will, to have a front and back. One is those items that we're, that we want to lead on, so to speak, that are Samamish-specific or regional-specific priorities, that if we don't advocate for them, nobody else is or few are. And the, and the stuff on the back, as you talked about, the other items and the, and the items we noted in the, in our memo on the, that are on AWCs are more support items that we can lend our shoulder to the wheel and our name to the effort, but they're not things that, that require us to be out in front on. The one I think I'll mention, and I think that, that council members were clear about this, is that we just sort of stipulate around the, the transportation package, so to speak. One, one thing I would, I would just note around that is, that's the ticket to everything else, right? So I, I think someone said, you know, make sure that we have a one line or whatever that says, you know, we support the, the passage of a full state transportation package and from those funds, et cetera, et cetera, or something, something along those lines. Because supporting passage of the package gets you in the room to make the request for what gets funded out of that package. So that's, that's, that's my only caveat.
Counsel, did we have any other comments or questions? Nick, did you have any other comments or questions? Mike?
Other than I'll support Mr. Sugg and his efforts to fit everything into the SAM rubric as he has so brilliantly in the past.
So this will come back to us again?
Yes, this will be coming back to the council. If I may, there was a second item that we were looking for the council's direction on, and that was on whether or not the council would support staff writing a letter to Senator Mullet from the mayor in support of a transportation package this session.
I would.
Yep, so moved.
Second?
Okay.
Aye.
We're getting tired. Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none.
Aye.
All those on the floor say aye. Or others, I'd say, yeah, aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, there you go. Okay. I think everybody's getting tired. All right. I think that is, I think we're done. All right, we'll see you back. All right, we'll see you back, well, two, two weeks. All right.
No, no, no.
No, no, no?
We still have new business, don't we?
Well, I'm talking to Mike.
Do I have a budget?
Well, I'm seeing Mike back in two weeks. He's right here. And, okay, thanks, Nick.
Great, thank you so much for your guidance on this.
Okay. All right, next up, okay. Next up is actually our discussion on regional boards and committees. And Scott, is that, that's going to be you and deputy mayor, correct?
Yeah, and my portion will be extraordinarily brief, mayor.
Okay.
Scott McCall, deputy city manager. And, and this was just teed up as there is a deadline to submit for regional boards and commissions through Sound Cities Association. The deadline is November 4th. So this is the last meeting that you all had on the schedule to be able to discuss this and decide, you know, if and who would like to apply for those positions. And since the deputy mayor is the pick chair and is on the SCA board, I feel like I'm going to turn it over to her, as she is far more knowledgeable than me.
Thank you. I think most of us already know this process and how it goes. I did send out an email. Hopefully you all got it. I actually sent it out to all the council candidates as well, just so that they were aware. The turnaround, obviously, for anyone who's not currently a sitting council member would be very tight. And, you know, I think in the past, it's always better, in my personal take, if a incoming council member wants to be on a regional border committee, I think that's great. I don't think serving in their first year is terribly advisable because they're trying to get their feet wet on what's going on in our own city. But they can, they can still attend the meetings, because anyone can attend them. But that also helps them to understand kind of some of those regional committees. And then it does help them to get on a committee in a subsequent year. But I think the region that we, the reason we wanted to bring this up was to find out if any sitting council members have an intent to reapply or apply for any of the regional committees, because we all need to coordinate. Anytime that we have two members from the same city that apply for any one of these will both be eliminated. So we don't want to have any overlaps. But it does make sense to be strategic as well in where we plug ourselves in. And historically, Samamish has had a lot of regional involvement through SCA. And so it would be good if we continue that. I know Tom has certainly served in several, you know, regional boards and for quite some time before he stepped off council. So I know there's a couple of hands up. I think Pam had her hand up first. So Pam?
Yeah, I was hoping that we could, you know, to recommend, I guess, using the spreadsheet. So we put together a spreadsheet a few years ago, which shows all of the regional boards and committee, who's currently on them. And then that way, people can see where we might have a vacancy coming up and where we might want to have somebody, you know, fill that. And also gives people the opportunity to fill that out and say, here's what I intend to do, so we don't get the double, the double nominating or, you know, self-nominating. So I don't know if there's any reason not to use the spreadsheet again.
Well, I think, I mean, we certainly, we certainly can. I think it's good to have a discussion here, because if someone knows that they're planning to apply for one of them, they can verbalize that right now. That will help populate a spreadsheet. But that way, we can have a discussion in the event that there's multiple council members that might be interested in a similar committee. And I know Karen is currently serving on one as an alternate and one as a member. And I think, you know, Karen, I don't know if you're planning to reapply for one or both of those or none of them. But that would probably be a starter, because Chris and Pam, who are currently sitting on regional boards, are peeling off. I'm sitting on the SCA board, and I will be peeling off. So there's certainly plenty of opportunity.
I would also throw out that while new council members will be getting their feet wet, they should apply, because there are a lot of times when we get alternate roles, and you have to go through being an alternate before you get to be the person. So I think that, you know, again, my advice would be, especially with, you know, there's going to be at least three new members, that you don't automatically discount them or not have them apply. So I would highly recommend that, that you have the new council members still apply. And, and like with a lot of things, sometimes you have to apply more than once before you get on as well. So I think they should definitely apply for some of these committees, where they can hopefully be an alternate for a year or two, and then eventually become the sitting member or the voting member.
They certainly can. I think it's just a matter of current sitting council members verbalizing what they want to do, because the turnaround between the election and the due date is two days, which is...
Yep, I know. And we had that when I, I know. And we had that the year I was elected, and I was still able to get on being an alternate, so.
All right, well, let's go down the line here. Tom?
Very worthwhile doing personally, and also for the benefit of the city. We need to be strategic about who applies for what, because there are certain committees that are of more value and more influence to the city of Samamish than others. But I would encourage everyone to at least take on one thing, if not a couple. But obviously, I am not going to be part of the process this time. So thank you for those of you who are, and keep going. Thank you.
Chris?
I saw your initial list sent out, and it said I'm retiring from the Joint Recommendations Committee. And that is a, we provide, do funding recommendations for housing needs. It's usually lower-income housing repair grants, CDBG, and so on. So that's, that's a good committee. It usually doesn't relate to Samamish, because we have, we're less, lower priority on the county's list from those types of improvements. But nonetheless, it's good to be part of that team. So that's one I'm retiring from. The other is the Regional Law Justice Committee. That one is extremely, well, number one, interesting, extremely interesting. They have such a broad scope of agenda items. And they deal with different things, like how police policy, how they deal with drug offenses and different things, and how rehabilitation issues and so on. So it's a really interesting, very powerful committee to be on. I think you're, you actually contribute less to that, but you're more, it feels more like a learning committee than a contributing committee like the JRC. So those are two that I'm retiring from. So you might want to list the Regional Law Justice as me retiring as well, so the council's aware that that's available to volunteer for.
Sorry, I missed that one, Chris.
Yeah, thanks.
Kent?
Yeah, so if I'm not mistaken, Christie, in your letter, then you're going to step down as pick. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, my intention is to, I, my personal take is that it's better to rotate these things around. So I am always been an advocate for getting new people onto things like EFER as well. And that's because you just never know when people are going to roll on or off a council. And having institutional knowledge walk off the council is, is very challenging. So I think, you know, at the end of this year, I'll still have two years left on council. But if I relinquish my role on pick to someone else, then that kind of assists the council in continuing on with some of that institutional knowledge. So that hit at my intention. But the pick is not a regional board. So that's kind of a different topic. But that's why I'd be rolling off of the board.
The beauty of pick is that it fits in my schedule. So, and I was...
I guess the question is, is do you have intentions of applying for any regional boards, though?
So I, I, my, my plan was to, to do pick as...
Again, not, not a regional board, so.
Correct, I understand. But I also would like to do the GMPC, growth management. Now is the one that Pam, I believe Pam Stewart was sitting on. And so I, I would, I would apply, I would, I would, I'd like to apply for that one. But my other secondary one would be as well, picks. And that pretty much takes up my, my calendar time, what I'm available to do. That's what I can do for, for the city of Samamish and for the council. Thanks.
Karen?
One of the things that I've been listening to different cities, and one of the things that they do that seems to, to work for, and I don't know if it would work here or not, is they prioritize their, their boards and committees. So, or in particular, their committees. And so we might want to look at, you know, what are the key committees that, and put them in kind of an order, and then go from there. So what are the top committees? And make sure that those are the, the ones that we hit first, to make sure that we've, we're putting, you know, a council member in the committees that we are, are very top committees, that we consider to be the most important to us. And kind of move from there. That's just my thought.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. I know the city of Isqwa does that, that they strategically pick out where they want to plug members, and then the members get plugged into those committees, rather than, I want to be on this one. But I, you know, back to, GMPC is, I think, is a great one. And any of the, you know, RTC would be another good one for someone to get plugged into. I know Kathy Huckabee served on that one for a long time. Anyway, Karen, are you planning to reapply for the two you're sitting on now?
Well, I was going to wait to see if we decided to put them in order and see what everybody's thoughts were on the order of the, because I would like to see and hear everybody's thoughts on the order of how they would place these committees.
Okay, well, I mean, that's something we could talk about now, but we would need to extend the meeting.
We need to do that anyway. It's 11:30.
Before these are due, so it's either...
But we do. We have a, we have a work session now on the 28th.
I know, but it's a workshop. And if we try and mingle it with this, we're going to lose time on that valuable topic. So I would move that we extend to 11:45.
Oh.
Thank you.
Mayor, mayor, if I may.
Are we not going to do the budget?
We've got three members of the staff from finance here waiting, and a consultant from Management Partners, to try to get your budget kicked off. Just a reminder.
I move we extend till midnight, which will extend again.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor in a second to extend to midnight. Any discussion?
Fire.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 So, Karen, back to what I was saying. I think if, first of all, if you reapply for your committees, you're more likely to get on them.
Right. I understand that.
Peel yourself off and try and prioritize another thing, it may take you a year to get on to that one. So that's just something to consider as well.
Right, but if it's not a priority committee to us, then it, to me, it doesn't matter.
Then I would suggest that we start outlining what priority committees are. And I would say growth is one of them. So if Kent wants to apply for GMPC, I think that's great. You know, he may have to wait a year to get on it, considering that they typically move the alternates up into the actual member roles, and then they fill the alternate. So it may be a year or two before he can actually get on. But again, can always attend the meetings. Transit, I think, would be another place we want to plug ourselves into as well. If there are others, call them out. Stormwater-wise, Karen, you're already on, are you on water quality? I put it in the email, but I, sorry, I forgot which one you're on.
I am on the, the King County Flood Control.
And that's actually a source of money. Well, there's a gap here. Can I talk?
Go ahead.
Okay, we also have ETP, and both Chris and I are rolling off that. So that is probably one place where I want to pay some attention.
But ETP is not regional.
I, I know, I'm still, still be concerned. And I'll say the same thing about Eastside Fire. I don't know if people are going to leave that or not, but that's part of the mix as well. But these all need to be considered in terms of people's time, so.
Indeed.
That's the case. Don't forget RIAA-8 as well.
Yeah, true. These may be a good starting point for some of the incoming people.
Yeah, I think, if I can, though, considering the time and that we still have a budget. I think we need to stick with the regional boards and committees, rather than waiting off.
Christie, do you have a list of them? I can't find it in your email right off the, this...
So I, it's in, it's in the, it's in your packet.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there's the Affordable Housing Committee. There's the Board of Health. There's Children and Youth Advisory Board, Domestic, the DVI, Emergency Management Committee, Greater Seattle Partners, Growth Management.
Honestly, we can do this in that spreadsheet.
Well, I think it's just priority, I think we need to decide, to Karen's point, what are our priorities? Is it just like...
GMPC.
Well, is it, well, there's more than one growth committee. So there's GMPB as well. There's GMPC and GMPB. And so I think you put them in buckets rather than by committee. So there's the growth ones. It's obviously a concern for us. So somebody would either need to apply for GMPC or GMPB. If transportation/ transit is a priority for us, then somebody trying to get on to RTC would be wise. But I, you know, I'm one member. I don't know if...
No, you're right on. Keep going.
Priority or not.
Yeah, I'm writing them down.
Priority. What's the other, the youth one would be nice, too, by the way. But that's obviously my passion, so I would give that like a top five.
I do think the King County Flood District, I think that...
That's the money, yep.
We do use that. It, it does help fund a lot of our, we've been utilizing it a lot for funding with our Kocany salmon.
Yeah, we have a problem on a couple of roads, too.
Well, so then what I might suggest, because I, Mike, I hate to call you out on this. I think it was you that kind of put that spreadsheet together. Pam, I know you originally did the spreadsheet. But I think maybe what we do is, is two different buckets, if you will. The first bucket being those tiered buckets that we want. Transit, or transportation, growth, and something relative to our water. So there's the Regional Water Quality Committee, and then there's McKee County Flood Control Committee that Karen's sitting on. And then the rest is kind of secondary, as far as, you know, personal interests go.
There's also PSRC.
PSRC is a good one. I was, I never got on to PS, I was an alternate for PSRC. But that is very time-consuming. And so between pick and PSRC, I was like, uh-uh, can't do it, can't do it all. So that's why I didn't continue to do that, to do that. But a lot of those committees are connected to, connected to it, so.
Christie, can, can Mike send that out to us? And then we kind of do like we did last time and just fill our names in, and then just make sure we're not buttonheads?
Yeah, I think that's fine. And I think as far as the candidates go, I sent them the entirety of the list after we discussed it at pick last week. And so they have them all before them. It's up to them to click the links that I sent, so they can investigate committees they might be interested in. But I think maybe what we can do, if, if we want, is say, this would be inappropriate for an incoming council member, should they be interested in it. I don't want to twist anyone's arm, because it's a lot to take in on your first year in council, and then try and add in a regional committee on top of that, anyway.
Okay, so we'll have Mike send that out, and then maybe we can have the whole council kind of weigh into how they would put them in order. And then once we've got that done, then the four of us can, well, actually, three of you guys that are, know you're going to be here, can start signing up.
Sounds good.
Sounds good, thanks.
Budget.
And then we're off to the budget.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. I'll just get right into it, cut out some of the verbiage here. But state law, RCW 35A.34.130, requires that a mid-biennium budget review be completed between August 31st and the end of the first year of the biennium, and that a public hearing be held on the mid-biennium review. and that a public hearing be held on the mid-biennium review. Council action on the city's 2022 property tax levy is also required by state law in conjunction with the budget update. The 2021-22 budget was adopted by the council on November 24th, 2020, ordinance number 02020-521, and subsequently amended on June 15th, 2021. The adjustments proposed this evening would update the current budget with the amended 2021-2022 biennial budget outlined in the tables that were provided. I'm going to turn it over now, without going through a bunch of numbers, to our finance staff, so that they can take you through what we've provided you in the package. Aaron, can I hand that off to you?
Okay, we're getting the slides pulled up here.
Okay. Let me just add then, a public hearing on the mid-biennium revisions to the 2022 portion of the city's 2021-2022 biennial budget is scheduled for November 16th, 2021. On October 19th, this evening, this is an opportunity for the council to review the city manager's mid-biennium recommendations and make any desired council revisions. They're still trying to bring it up, and I doubt that we'll extend till 1:00 or 1:30 in the morning to give you an opportunity to advise us on all those revisions. But after we present it tonight, you'll want to dream on it and think on it. Thank you.
All right, we should be up here. This is Aaron Anton, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director here. And I'm going to go over the 21-22 budget modifications. So, these are the city manager recommended adjustments. And just a reminder of our current 22 budget. This was adopted in June, June 15th of 2021. The total operations ending fund balance of $35.5 million, and the total ending fund balance for all funds, $61 million. We're going to go through those recommendations, which are also included in the packet material. So, first off, we're going to hit the revenues. If you wanted to follow along, you can look at Exhibit 3 of the Agenda Bill Packet. And that exhibit is a summary of each of these, but I'm going to go through the revenues and then the expenditures. So, on the revenue side, what the modification includes is the 1% property tax, regular levy, plus the remaining bank capacity. And the note there is that, that combined, both of those tax actions are approximately $57 per year for a home that was, has an assessed value of $950,000. The other adjustments on revenue are sales tax. So, we're upping the sales tax forecast for the 2022 period, along with it, the criminal justice sales tax piece. And then, we're recognizing a federal grant for the 228th overlay project. Then there is a collection of other smaller adjustments for a total revenue addition of 3.5 million. On the expenditure side, we went through and just categorized by department. So, again, if you're looking at Exhibit 3 of the packet, there's a crosswalk to more detail on each of these in Exhibit 3. And then, there's also the full line item detail of each of these adjustments categorized by department. So, we're just looking at the summary of the summary here. And so, the numbers that are showing in positive are expenditure decreases, and the ones that are shown with brackets are expenditure increases. So, that's how we're showing the expenditures on this page. This continues on through the rest of the expenditures in the general fund. In total, this mid-buy adds up to $4.5 million additional expenditures in the general fund. And if you take the revenue adjustments, less the expenditure adjustments, the total net amount is just going down about a million. So, I would, I would want to draw the council's attention to the non-departmental capital transfers there of $1 million. So, although we're talking about the general fund, a million of that really is a transfer to the capital funds, and so is your, your bout net even in total for general fund. Moving on to the capital funds, again, some smaller adjustments here, some interest income going down in the Parks Capital Fund. So, we're just updating the interest forecast for that one. Transportation, that's the transfer coming over from the general fund, the $800,000. That's for the Eastlake-Samamish Shore Lane Drive Project. So, that's coming from the, the funding there is coming from the general fund over the Transportation Capital Fund. So, this slide is showing the expenditure side of that $800,000. So, not a lot in total there for the capital funds. And then, the next slide shows the surface water. So, just in total, revenues slight adjustment down of $40,000, and expenditures largely due to the Lewis Thompson Tight Line Project being added in on that modification. So, again, additional detail on all of those is included in the packet. There's full exhibits with more explanation, if there's interest in going into those level detail. Wanted to highlight the FTE adds as well. So, included in the modification, there are 5.25 positions that are being added. That equates to about $530,000. This table reflects the different funds and what, what's changing in the FTE totals to get to the new 2022 total of 139.5 FTEs. I will note that what's highlighted here, that we're converting a building inspector to a combo inspector, so that's, that's a net add of .25 FTE there. The senior planner and the permit tech, those 2.25 positions are all tied to the development fee revenue. So, it's a development fee revenue recoverable positions for those particular 2.25. The others there, the maintenance worker, restoration specialist, and the IT project manager are not revenue-related recovered positions. So, with all of those adjustments rolled in, the new proposed 2022 budget would go to a total ending fund balance for all funds of $57 million. Again, that's a total change of down $4 million between the 2022 budget and the proposed for all funds. The final general fund only is $31.5 million of that $57 million. So, you can look down the ending fund balance column and see the different categories for the different funds that are going on there. So, that's the total look as of November, when this would come before council for action as part of their mid-buy budget ordinance. So, that's going to be following a public hearing as well. Just a quick update on an inter-fund loan. So, this discussion is going to continue. Wanted to let council know that there's going to be some additional work. Public Works mentioned this previously at the study session. It's going to be coming back to council to look at some options on November 1st. So, just wanted to make note of that. That's not included in these budget recommendation numbers that you're seeing tonight. That's going to be something that's going to come in on November 1st. A couple of things that we also did, and that's why we have Steve from Management Partners on the line, is we updated the financial model. So, we took this data set, and we added two large pieces of data for the model. It's a decision-making tool that council can, can walk through. The first big set of data that we added was to update the 2021 numbers. So, they were previously shown as budget 2021. And so, we send them an updated estimate of the year-end estimated revenues and expenditures. So, that's a different profile than what the 21 budget would be. So, there's some positive performance that's being estimated there. And so, we're putting that as an input into the model. The second piece is that we replaced the 2022 numbers with what was included that we just overviewed with the city manager's budget modification inputs. So, that data set, we had just looked at. We wanted to see what that looks like in the models. And so, that's what Management Partners was going to do for us. So, they have provided some overview slides of the model here, and kind of walked through this. I don't know if you're sensitive on time. I don't know how much you want to dive into the model, or if you just want to view the couple of slides here. And then, it's up to council's purview. This is just a decision-making tool for council to entertain. So, we can certainly send out this slide deck, and then you can let us know if you want to look into it more. Does that work? Okay. So, let's just go ahead and flip through that. That was a reminder of what it was before. Here it is with the 21 added in, and then 22 added in. So, those are the two summary slides from the model, showing the cumulative impact on the left and the annual impact on the right. Okay, a quick reminder on timeline. We do, are moving towards the November-December dates. There's going to be a public hearing that's set to occur on 11/16. And so, following the city manager's adopted budget, that filing, then we notice the public hearing, and then potential council adoption following the public hearing on the 16th or by year end. There is separate action that's also required as part of the property tax levy. So, that deadline is November 30th, and so, the 16th would also have that separate ordinance on the property tax levy, as well as the public hearing for that. So, that's the timeline piece. And then, the last thing that we were looking for council direction on was we received, what is this, five requests from council members that were for items that were not included in the city manager budget modification package that we just went through. So, these five areas, what we're looking for is direction from city council, if you want to add one, none, some of these, however, whatever council's will is on that, into the city manager's 2022 budget modification. So, I'll turn it back over to the mayor, if you want to go through those. It would be helpful for us. Thank you.
Okay, so, we've got, above the screen, we've got city council requests that have come in. And I'm going to have everybody just take a look at it first, and then we can ask, start with some questions on it. And I see council member Stuart.
Well, yeah, first of all, Aaron, I know we got, in the packet, there's kind of a laundry list, if you will, that just kind of goes through all the requests. I guess, we went through this so quickly, and I feel like we shouldn't, I mean, it's $4.5 million of additional expenses. I feel like we need to spend at least a minute on those and understand why in the mid-buy, we're getting an extra $4.5 million worth of expenses coming in. So, I don't know if we can back up a little bit and kind of go through some of those. We certainly don't have to go through the ones that are $300 and $400. But there are some big ones in here, and I think it's worth discussing and understanding why, why coming in at mid-buy. It's not to say no, but, but that's a fairly large number there. And if you can back up to one of your slides, so, if I understand it correctly, we believe we got an extra $3.5 million of, of revenue. And that's assuming that we take the rest of our bank capacity and the 1% for this year, correct?
Yes.
Can we back up to the, to the revenue slide? So, so the recommendation is that we take the 1% for this year, and I believe it's, how much is in the bank capacity, another 5%?
The dollars is 1.22 million there.
Right. And the bank capacity is at 5% that's still in the bank? Or is it 6%?
It's not an actual percent. It's over the prior year, so it's cumulative. So, it's more of a dollars is how we get that number from the King County Assessor.
Well, how many 1% is it? Because we bank the 1% every year. I mean, I get that it turns in anyway. It's taking the entirety of the bank capacity. It is going to raise people's taxes by a certain percent. So, it's a percent as well as a dollar.
Yes. So, the dollars go up about $57 per year for
But that's not what I'm asking here, Aaron. How many 1% are we talking about? How many years of bank capacity is it?
So, you took, yeah, so roughly 5%.
Five years. Okay. So, this would be a total, in total, it would be 5% there plus 1%. So, a 6% increase, which is, I think, what was taken last year as well. And then, these are just additional taxes that are already, or grants that are already coming in. There's no, there's no raising of taxes. Those are already taxes that have been applied, correct, or invoked?
That's correct. We're just truing up the forecast for the sales tax, the local criminal justice, and the federal grant.
Okay. So, we've got an extra $3.5 million coming in. What about the ARPA funds? Because I don't think those were included when we did our budget. So, where's that $2.5 million?
That was included in the June update that council did. So, these would just be the modifications since June.
All right. Can we go, so, can you go to the one that shows the beginning and ending fund balances? Keep going. Going. There we go. So, this is what it was, right? As of June, it was going to be a total ending fund balance of $61 million. Now, if you go to the next slide with the proposal, right, it's $57 million. Right? Where are we going now?
So, we're going to the end. Yeah, it's 57.
So, it's 57 million. So, it's, we're going down by four. So, here's where I'm struggling with the math. So, we're going to increase revenue by 3.5. The laundry list of items says it's 4.5. So, it's a difference of a million, yet our total ending fund balance is still going down by 4 million. So, help me out here.
Right. So, the million is the general fund only. The 4 million is all funds.
Okay. So, the total laundry list of, of additional expenditures then must be more than 4.5 million?
Yes.
So, where's the other $3 million being spent? Where are those adjustments?
So, those were the other ones in the other funds. So, the capital funds, we went through this stormwater. So, the stormwater is the biggest one. So, those are in Exhibit 3 of the packet. After you get past the general fund, it goes into the categories of the other types of funds.
So, in past years, we've, you've given us really cool slides, where you kind of go through and say, hey, here are the big ticket items that we're talking about increasing. And you put it on a couple of slides. Is there any way we can get that so that we can see? And maybe this presentation is it, we didn't have this presentation in our packet. But we just went through it really fast. This is, this is a big deal, right? We're talking about spending an extra $7.5 million. Is that right?
Yeah, we can, I don't have a problem sending out a copy of the presentation, if that's helpful. All the details are in the packet. We can, if there's an additional illustration, we can
Yeah, it's hard to spelunk through the individual funds, right? Which is why it's nice to get the summary slide, so we can see what those big ticket items are, and we don't have to go in and try to identify each line item from the packet. And like I said, in all the past years that I've been on the council, you've done a really great job of doing that. You've given us those high-level slides that say, here are the, here are the big ticket items. So, just like you have the council additional requests, right, where you listed those out, we would get a couple of slides that showed, here's, here are the big things that we're talking about doing, so that we can determine if those are things we want to spend that extra money on.
Okay.
I think the, the public would love to see that, too, because, again, we went through this super fast. Thanks. Thanks.
Councilmember Trane.
Well, I forgot what my question was. No, that's not true. Erin, the last slide, please. I believe it was, because the, I get, thank you for the overview of the budget. I get it, thanks. I looked at it. I like the model. I'd be curious as to what happens if we, well, that's for the next biennial. Look, on this, on this, if, and I don't know what I'd have to take away yet, right? Because I'm kind of looking at your slide here, and after reading all the numbers and the budget and stuff, anyway, I like the Friends of Lake Samana State Park and the youth, that's a passion. So I look at those two numbers and say, is there a way for us to find $50,000? And if there is, I'm, I'm all for those two. The, who, I mean, I don't know, and it doesn't really matter who suggested it, but the hazardous mitigation plan for forestry protection, isn't that part, that one in the city arborists are, I thought that they were in the urban forest plan and the plan that was set out with, when we approved that. Is this to accelerate that?
The answer, the answer to the city arborist, which is mine, is yes.
Yeah, I, I, I think these two are kind of accelerating something that we are try, we want to do, that we are planning to do, and that they'll come up in the next year's budget, because with the current budget and the restrictions that this council put on the budget, these two items kind of don't work right now. Not that they're not important, right? Like, I'm a, I'm a forester. I love these two ideas. If, if the city manager found an extra half a million dollars here, then do them all, right? But that's pie in the sky. So, so what I'm saying is, I, I think with a two now, then four, then six, and eight-year budgeting, you know, if I'm looking two, two cycles down the road, right, these things will all get taken care of. But I was just, I would go for the bottom two, i- if, if I had like king for the day kind of thing. That, that's what I would do. If, if there's a way to fix, fit those two into the budget, fantastic, go with it. The other ones, I'm a little leery. I, this is, to me, it's kind of small numbers, but I also know I'm not an idiot. We spent $9 million over budget on a road project. So, so we're compensating, you know, there's a $13 million expenditure that we're trying to take care of at the same time, so good job. I think overall, the manager's, he's got the right idea. If, if you can do two of these, right on. If not, I'm not hard pressed. I'm liking the budget as proposed by the city manager. Thank you.
Okay, council, it's midnight, so we need to look at extending.
Second.
I wasn't making a motion. Okay.
I move to extend to 12:30, and Christie seconded it.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to extend to 12:30, and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay. And then next up is Councilmember Odell.
Thanks, Karen. I spent part of my career as a controller of a major operation in the airline business. We had our station managers justify everything, basically, you know, what did you do last year, what did you do this year, what do you plan to do this year, and why? One of the keys to getting money out of a budget is figuring out what you're doing you don't want to keep doing, because maybe not everything you're doing is the right thing to do. It would help to have, frankly, by cost center, a, a year-to-date various analysis versus this year's budget, along with a budget request for next year. Basically, three columns, side by side. Then you can go through very quickly and figure out what's going on and, and why maybe you don't want to do certain things. Are there any things that have, of their usefulness? So I did take the time this weekend to go through the cost centers and look at what was going up, a bunch of places where we're going up because we deferred budget for the first six months. Well, if those positions are still empty and we're getting along without them, maybe we ought to think about that. As far as the number two thing on this list, my view there is the city arborist salary would be largely paid for by fines coming from illegal tree removal and that sort of thing. Plus, you have someone around who could coordinate from a city point of view all the stuff that was outlined in the urban forestry plan. I still think that was worth doing. I don't know enough about number one, hazard mitigation plan. It's a good idea, we should be doing it, but if we can't afford to do it, we can't. On the other hand, one fire will make that look pretty small. So I would like to take the time, frankly, to go back to this budget with a fine-toothed comb and see what we're doing that maybe we shouldn't be doing anymore. Yeah, I'll pick one thing that's going to be kind of a flashpoint, and I'll hear from Claredale tomorrow morning, but if we're hearing that all the fire, all the utility box coverings are being taken away because of the utility box program, maybe we should be looking at whether or not we want to continue doing that, that kind of thing. I'm, I'm just using this as an example. But frankly, folks, I think we're going at this the wrong way. We've been going at it this way for a long time, and I'm part of the problem. But I think we do need to step back and take a solid look at what, what it is we're doing today and do we need to keep doing it. Part of the problem on the ending fund balance is we have a whole bunch of money going into parks. Maybe we can't afford to do that. But I'm mixing the operating budget and the capital budget, and they shouldn't be mixed, but in the end, it all affects the ending fund balance. Thank you.
Okay, next is Councilmember Ross.
You first have a question. Number one is, what is our head count right now? It's budgeted at 134. What is the current staffing?
It's in the packet, Chris.
Yeah, right, I couldn't, I was, I mean, through it.
Yeah, I know.
So this, this is Chris. At the end of September, the head count was 114.5 full-time equivalents and eight contract employees, for a total of 122.5.
Okay, and let me ask you this, and does 134 include contract employees?
No.
Okay. So the comparative head count is 134 to 114. That means we're 20 under, right?
Well, if you just want to count the, we have six budgeted, limited contract employees also.
We have six budgeted, so we're over two on contract hires, but we're under 20 on head count, so we're net under 18 employees. So that's the way I look at it, from what you just told me. And we're asking for five additional, and, and then, and then I also look at the council requests. I think those first two line items would imply additional two. I'll, I'll tell you right now, there is no way I'm going to support an increase in head count, including the first two line items. I think what we need to do with those seven head count items is look at those 18 net underruns, and we've historically underrun in double digits, so I'm not asking a lot, and it's back to Councilmember, Member Odell's statement. We just need to analyze the numbers, and we have a forecasting model. Let's find out where we really aren't performing the statement of work at the levels that we're budgeting, and those are opportunities to reallocate head count for a different purpose. So I would challenge the staff to find ways to absorb those head counts with our underruns, and should you reach a point in the future where you are fully expending on your budget and head count, then that's the time to ask for additional head count. But all we're doing is layering head count and cost onto a false budget. It's not, it's not tight, it's not analyzed from a standpoint of what is our real recurring labor cost and what do we do? Now, I understand things are not getting done, then we have to analyze what is not getting done, and is it detrimental to the level of service we're trying to deliver to the city, or is it something that we can continue not to do, or if we are, if it's important, I think we would have staffed for it. So those are my comments on head count, and that's really, really concerns me. It's, it's what I talked about in the regular budget review, and we asked you to hold back on hiring all the people to 134, which you haven't, which is good, but I think you need to take that, that same comment into account in the mid-buy and not ask for additional head count. Redeploy heads to different purposes would be my first approach. So you have ample headroom to absorb those head count increases. Number two, thank you for East Lake Samana Shore Lane project. That is critical, it's top priority CIP project for roads. I also would like us to consider in our forecasting model a way to catch up on all of those low-rated roads and have a plan perhaps in the next two years or two or three years to perform repairs on all those roads that are outside of the resurfacing program, and then get us to a point going forward after three years that we're just on a resurfacing program based on priority going forward, so we don't have expensive repairs in the future that we're all, all we're doing is routine maintenance and resurfacing. If we can try to forecast that and, and plan that and get everything caught up so we no longer have to deal with these major road projects for our residents. And I think I said it all, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. I don't want to rehash some of the points that have already been brought up, but I think based on the expenditures that are being requested, obviously, the biggest items there are relative to head count. So I think it just seemed a better understanding for the head count that is being requested. There's obviously a gap then in providing a service, right? Like, there's a permit technician that is requested there, so I, I've been left to assume that we're not able to process permits timely enough. I, I don't know, I, I need to understand the rationale behind the ask, and then somewhat similar to what Councilmember Ross was stating, which is if we have all of these vacancies at the city, are some of, I, I guess, understanding of those vacancies, how many of them have been vacant for an extended period? I'd like to understand why they've been vacant. Have we not been recruiting for them? They're not maybe necessary in the operations, or we're able to get along without them? I, I don't know, but I think, you know, anytime we start adding head count, I, I just want to understand why, because the, the turnaround on this is that we turn back around to our taxpayers with our handout, and I need to be able to answer their questions and justify these asks. So, thank you.
Okay, Dave, did you want to? Okay. Okay, so, yeah, I had questions. Primarily, my questions are based a little bit on the fact that we had, seemed to have the same amount of open positions last year. We had, you know, 10 or a dozen that were open last year. So I'm just trying to see, are they the same positions that were open last year? Are they, I mean, are they, are they ones that we're just not filling? Are, so I'd like to know a little bit more about those positions. Are they just ones that we have not filled, or are they new positions, or what, what are they? And then the other, the other comment I had is on the Hazard Mitigation Plan for Forestry. I would be against that at this time, only because, one, I think we're a little bit of cart in front of the horse here when it comes to, aren't we waiting for us to be putting this, you know, putting this group together for the tree ordinance, and then this, you know, this group's going to be, they're supposed to be coming in and, and actually, there's going to be a committee that's going to be running that and actually doing a lot of that. Second thing is on this for the fire protection. EFNR is actually just now opening up a program that is going to be covering wildfire protection and is going to be covering the cities, and so I, I'm just questioning if we aren't double covering some of that. So I would want to check in on that. Okay, next up would be Councilmember Odell.
Well, once again, as far as the first two line items I hear go, as we just discussed, there are a number of open positions, and the city's been getting along with them one way or another. Some may hurt more than others to keep open. The ones that were people actually getting the job done without the head count being there, perhaps that head count could be reallocated into one of these, one or both of these positions. But again, I can't stress strongly enough that we need to look at what we're doing and whether we need to keep doing it, as opposed to just simply asking for more, more and more head count. Plus, there's a whole bunch of money that is not being spent in other areas. I don't have the ability to pull that up right now because I need the various, but, which is why I asked for it. So, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, just to summarize, a lot of great points raised by my fellow council members, thanks for that. I really think we, we need, we need a summary of these big-ticket items and the justification. And on the flip side, for these open head counts, again, a, a summary of why they're open and what the plans are to fill them, and, and are they still needed? And again, I'm not saying that they're not, but we just need to understand that. And I do think for those open head count, how, like, what departments are they in? How long have they been open? And why do we think they're still open? And what isn't getting done because we don't have them there? I think that's what we need to understand for those open heads. And I, I just, I find it quite troubling, honestly, that there's a budget request for five and a half new head count, and there's not a single line item that explains why we need to add five and a half more people to the city staff. Again, I'm not saying we don't need it, but that's a huge ongoing burden on, on the taxpayers year over year over year, and to come and ask for that with no backup information as to why is quite troubling to me. So I, I think we really need that level of detail, and we need a way to get it out to the public before we have to have a public hearing and vote on this, so that people can see what this is and weigh in on it.
Okay, Dave?
Mayor and council, I, I think the council members have made some great points, and we'll go back and do a... we'll go back and do a more thorough analysis for you on the headcounts. But I have to challenge back that in the packet, it does justify, it may not be a paragraph, but it does identify what the new positions are. We can provide some more explanations as to why, but we did scrutinize those very carefully. We are looking at workload, we're looking at levels of customer service, demand of the public, demand of the, of the staff and demand of the council. As to the community development positions that are in there, there is an increasing demand by the public for assistance. And I'm going to have David Pyle come on just a moment so he can explain. But as there is a transition of more and more, and David said this before about the owner builder or the person who's been sitting on a lot and all of a sudden wants to self-annoy themselves to be a builder because they're going to build a couple houses, they are doing that more and more and it's requiring more and more staff time because they're not wanting to spend the time with the architects and the construction folks. So I'll let David talk here a moment and then I'll come back to some of the other ones if you don't mind. All right, David, are you on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so a couple of things I'm hearing here is one regarding the vacancies. If you took a snapshot of DCD at any point in time, you would see that we're chasing about two vacancies at any given time. That doesn't mean that we are not in open recruitment in some form of discharge of an employee, recruitment or in onboarding. It's extremely expensive for us and it's a huge staff drain for our leadership to have to constantly be filling these roles. One of the reasons why we have to fill these roles and is cited in exit interviews by staff is that we are a very lean staff body and they, they really feel like they're always behind the ball on things, they can't keep up. We've seen, so that's one issue is, is even if we seem to have that number of vacancies, it doesn't mean that those are positions that are remaining vacant. It's just that if you were to take a snapshot in time, we have two, approximately two positions in our department that we are always having somebody leave and having to fill. It doesn't mean it's the same position, it just rolls over to a different work group and we're constantly dealing with that at the, at the line staff level. You may not see it as a council because you see the same faces with the leadership coming to you and presenting things. However, at the ground level, we do see that happening. So I would challenge that if it appears that there are that many vacant positions, that doesn't really mean that they are vacant. It just means that, that we are in the process of recruitment for those at that point in time. So those should not be counted as positions that we're able to get by with without filling because if we were not able to fill those, it would be a major challenge in our doing our day-to-day business. So the reason why we've added these three positions, which are cost recoverable, the senior planner, the permit technician and the combination inspector, I could explain the combination inspector first. The building inspection group is basically running at such a lean operation level that we don't have the ability to allow staff to take vacation or attend training or take sick leave. If you were to look at the number of hours in a working year and you were to consider that across the number of employees that are in that group and you were to look at the number of vacation hours, sick leave hours and training hours needed, basically we need the equivalent of one FTE to backfill that. What's happening now is those employees are working overtime, we're facing burnout, we're faced with an issue where our staff are basically being cherry picked by other organizations that can offer greener fields. So unless we want to keep losing staff, we need to add one staff person so that those staff can feel like they can actually take a vacation, they could actually take sick leave and they can actually attend training without being so far behind when they come back from it that they have to work a 12-hour day. So that has to do with the building inspector group. Then if you go into the senior planner group, we are seeing more and more complexity in our codes as we're trying to address situations in the community and we're needing a staff, a staff position that is a higher grade that can help with the current planning issues we're facing in permitting related to low impact development, related to design criteria for buildings and, and projects. The code package you're looking at tonight with your, or you looked at tonight with Development Reg Phase Two is a really good example. As we get more complexity, we spend more time, it's more staff intensive to implement and we need more staff to do it, plain and simple. This is again, is a cost recoverable position, recoverable through permit fees. We have a partner program we're working on right now where we're reassessing the entire design of our permit fee structure and we're anticipating coming back to you with a very, very much a wholesale change in how we collect fees. This has to do with the fact that as Dave described, as we face moratorium and as we face the change in our community, we're seeing fewer and fewer professional builders in the community and more, more and more one-off homeowners or property owners who are trying to build a home to flip it or trying to build a home to live in it and we're having to hold hands. It's very customer service intensive and if the council was to direct us not to provide that customer service, then we would be saying to customers, we will return your phone calls in five days if we can. We will be able to do that inspection that you want tomorrow in three days. These are the kind of things that we face and we're facing more and more if we are not able to fill these positions. Finally, the permit tech position is one that when we added right-of-way permits and electrical permits to the mix, we did not add staffing. So with this, we really need, we're playing catch-up at this point. We have one senior permit technician, one junior permit technician currently and they deal with all the permits that come through. They also coordinate all of the reviews done between the different work groups, whether it's current planning, whether it's fire, whether it's parks, whether it's public works. Then they keep things on track and as you as council know, because you see many emails from customers, we are constantly facing having to explain to customers how to do things and constantly explain to them that, hey, we're a couple of days behind, we're behind, we're behind because of staffing. So we need this position to help coordinate permitting in order to stay on track and deliver the level of customer service that we think this council wants to deliver. Again, this is a position that's recoverable. The other two positions that were on the other slide, the land use inspector and the arborist position are related to, are delivering other services that, that the council has expressed interest in. The land use inspector is one that's really important because what that does is it allows for us to do random inspections. Currently, the way we operate is we do inspections based on requests from a builder and when the builder requests an inspection, they get, they clean up the site, they're on their best behavior. But there are things happening on construction sites that we don't know about because we are not on those sites every day. The issue there is that we need somebody that can drop in and do a site inspection and say, you're, you took down your clearing fence, you're off on the side, you've stored your lumber in the tree protection zone, you're, you're running equipment through your vegetated flow path for LID drainage. The things that they're doing when we're not looking are the things that we really need to be addressing and that is covered through a land use inspector. Probably 50% recoverable, not wholly recoverable because what we'd be doing is, is sort of inspection that is not something that's requested by the applicant. The city arborist is one that I've heard a lot about and this has to do with tree permitting. We don't have an arborist on staff. Staff often feel bewildered by trying to resolve tree issues that they're not equipped to deal with. So having somebody on staff could really help provide leadership in this capacity. And if the city is really interested in protecting its canopy, this would be a position that you would definitely want to bring in just as soon as you possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Before we go on, Mayor, I'd like to continue. On the FTE positions that we have, and I'm going by memory here, so I'm sorry for that. But last year, we had the 134, council capped us at 130. At one point during the year, we got up to about 122 and we have had turnover. Some of it is COVID really related, some of it is because in those COVID-related situations, people can work remotely or they can, and they can work closer to home. It's, it's a balance. But we've recently been in a constant recruitment, I believe it is, for some of our signal technicians. We've not been able to fill our city engineer position and we have gone through a number of recruitments there. We just lost two HR personnel at the same time and we had put in a limited term employee who we're looking at very closely that maybe would be able to, to be an FTE rather than an LTE. And we'll, we'll show you a little bit more of an analysis where we've had turnover and where we've been unable to fill positions and it's constant. And the staff that we had in HR was working very hard, constantly doing recruitment, constantly onboarding people. It is a problem. COVID has made it more difficult. Let's see, was there, oh, we're, we're down currently right now. We have 12 people in maintenance assigned, we have six positions opened. We've recently had some turnover there, we've had some personnel challenges that we're working with and getting people adjusted with a new labor agreement. All of these things have an impact. So we'll, we'll do a better analysis for you and get you a little more caught up with sometimes, you know, us working with it every day, we're closer to it. So it's very evident to us, but it's not so evident to you folks. And I understand that and we'll apologize upfront. So Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, well, I know I hear the same thing from Redmond and Issaquah, so maybe we can do like a swap meet or something. Okay, so, okay, next up would be Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, appreciate those explanations. One of the things that I think it would be great, again, to get a table that outlines all of this. So David, you made a great case that says, hey, we have two open positions and we kind of always do, but they're not the same two. So you'd be able to list your two positions and say they've only been open for X weeks, right? So they haven't been open for two years, right? They've only been open for X weeks or a month or whatever. That would take care of that. What was also very interesting though is a number of those positions you said are cost recoverable. Given that, I'm not sure why we're being asked for budget to cover those positions. So being able to show what that cost recovery would be and when we think we would recover that cost, I think is also part of the equation. And I'm not sure, Dave Rudat, why we're not seeing that come forward with these requests to show, you know, here's the position, here's how much it's going to cost, but we think we're going to recover 50% or 80% of it, then, then that should be factored into the budget. So let's see that in the analysis. Appreciate you guys sharing that verbally, but for, for $13.9 million worth of additional expenses, I think we need a, a table that starts to summarize some of these items.
We'll, we'll lay that out a bit for you, more for you because from an accounting standpoint, just because it's recoverable, you don't have those direct comparisons unless we do those separately. So I'll look to finance to help with that. But you still have to show the expense. You still have to fund the expenditure, but then you have the revenue. I don't mean to be talking over, okay, I'll stop.
Okay, Council, it is, it is 25 to one, so we're going to have to extend. Do I hear a motion from somebody?
Hey Karen, I think we ought to, enough sent up for tonight, 25 to one. I'm done.
Okay, so should we have the information sent to us and have this? Can we have more review on the budget then put onto the November 1st meeting?
Certainly.
Okay. That would be excellent, thank you. And Chris, you had, did you have a comment or did you have something else that you wanted sent out for us for review for the November 1st meeting?
No, I'm going to respect the wishes of everybody to take a nap on this tonight and let's.
Okay. And David Pyle, thank you for staying awake, that was very helpful with your explanation.
Move to adjourn, is that what we're looking for?
Oh.
Second.
First and a second, I'm liking that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, aye. All right, everybody, have a good week.
Thank you, Steph. Thank you, Steve.
Yes, thank you, everybody for staying.